Now we are ready. Don't hear, don't hear the vibe, you don't hear it? We're good. All right, there we go.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. I would like to call the June 8, 2022, meeting of the school committee to order. Would all members of the present be in a case of enroll call? Mr. Carr?
Present.
Mr. Dial?
Present.
Mr. Kearney?
Present.
Ms. St. Orange?
Present.
And President Craig Mclewen, that gives us a full panel forum. This meeting is being held in hybrid format via Zoom. If you would like to participate remotely, just utilize the Q and A feature on Zoom. It's also being streamed live via Facebook and on Cohasset 143 TV. We'll start as we sort of revitalize this tradition, starting with the pledge of allegiance, the beginning of all meetings. So all who are able and interested, stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Keep our flag right over here.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Okay, so every year, the school committee reorganizes in that it selects various people to hold various positions within the committee. Last year, around this time, we collectively voted as a committee, given the novel circumstances to retain the organization from the prior year as to retain some level of consistency. This year, however, I, I, I would like us to consider doing something different. I think it's important to have a, a difference in perspective in the leadership roles in the committee. And I think it was, there was certainly some merit to keeping the positions the way they were during the pandemic. So that we can continue with the important sort of triage work that we were engaged in at that time. But it's really important that we shift these positions. So we're, we're going to engage in this exercise now. I'm just going to explain a little bit how it's going to work. For each position, so that is the chairperson, the vice chairperson, and the secretary. There will be a nomination, I will ask for a nomination. And that nomination needs to be seconded. And once it's seconded, we will conduct the voice vote on the nomination, just as we were in a motion. And if it passes, then the nomination, they'll obviously carry. And that person will then take that role. We'll start with the position of chair, we'll move to vice chair, and, and then secretary. There has been a suggestion, and before engaging in this exercise, I'd like to take a voice vote or ask for a motion. I think it's really sensible. In past years, we have done this reorganize, and then immediately, the person that was nominated and elected as chair would then be required to suddenly run the meeting in the middle of it. I personally have a little bit of scar tissue from that experience. So I think that it was suggested to me, it was not my idea, it was someone else's idea, that we vote to make these positions effective starting the next meeting. I think that's a really clean idea, and it will, I think, enable the next chairperson to prepare adequately to run the meeting. So is there a motion to that effect to make these, these nominations that we're about to vote on effective the next meeting, which I think is June 22?
We make that as part of our elections. So we just are electing the people for positions effective on the next meeting day?
Either way, I feel like we could just do a motion right now for all of them, and then we don't have to worry about that. And we can just do nominations, however you would like to do it. Comfortably the way, it seems like the same result, so.
It is the same result.
Okay.
It's just you don't have. What's that?
We're saving future people from trauma.
Right.
Right. So you're saying, do you want to do it as we vote for this position?
When we, when we, no, we just, when we vote the election, we understand the elections are not for today, they're for the next, next meeting.
Right, that's what I'm asking for, a motion to that effect at this point.
Okay, so we'll, I will make, so moved.
Okay. Motion's been made by Mr. Dial, seconded by Mr. Carr, thank you very much, all in favor, aye. All opposed? Okay, so that motion carries, so these positions will be effective as of the next meeting on June 22, 2022. So we'll, we'll start with the chairperson role, like I said, and I would like to nominate Mr. Lance Dial to assume the role of chairperson of the school committee for the upcoming calendar year, or fiscal year, I should say, academic year, whatever, however you want to put it, everyone who's been talking about here. So is there a second to that nomination?
I'll second.
The nomination's been seconded by Mr. Kearney, all in favor will do a voice vote, aye. All opposed? Okay, so that nomination is approved unanimously, and Mr. Dial will become the chairperson of the school committee as of June 22, 2022. Congratulations, Mr. Dial. And I'd just like to say, it was a really fulfilling role, I loved it. It was tiring, I'm glad to have a break from it. But I would absolutely recommend to anyone out there with a passion for education to run for the school committee. And, and think about being chairperson of the school committee for some period of time. It was, it was a really, really awesome quasi-professional experience. Thank you to everyone that, that made me chair, I appreciate that opportunity. We'll move on to the position of, of vice chairperson. Are there any nominations for the position of vice chairperson?
I'd like to nominate Craig.
So Miss Kearney has nominated Craig Mclewen for the person, for the position of vice chairperson. Is there a second to that nomination?
I will second that nomination. In view of your prior comments about loving the chair so much, you can still be a vice chair.
Just a little more vice involved. So the nomination's been seconded, all in favor, all abstain, all in favor, aye. All opposed? Again, all abstain, so that was a vote of four members and one abstention, so that nomination passes. So I will assume the role of vice chairperson as of June 22, 2022. And lastly, is the position of secretary? Is there a nomination for the position of secretary?
I would like to nominate Mr. Carr.
Okay, there's been a nomination for, for Mr. Carr to assume the role of secretary for FY23. I will second the nomination. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion unanimously passes. Mr. Carr, thank you for accepting the unenviable role of secretary, which we're going to try and change a little bit, hopefully. But that, thankfully, will be a job for Mr. Dial to oversee. So that's done, and we'll move on, and, and we'll, we'll play musical chairs as of the next meeting. And then thank you for that suggestion, Mr. Dial, I think that was a good suggestion to do it that way. Public comment. So ordinarily, we pretty much start the meeting with public comment, but we had to reorganize. So public comment, just for those of you who have never attended a meeting or have never heard this before, public comment is reserved for issues or points of discussion or concerns that are not related to something that's on the agenda. If you have a point or a question or concern about something that's on the agenda, please wait till we arrive at that place in the agenda. But if your concern does not relate to something on the agenda, please feel free to comment now, whether that's live or if you are participating virtually, you can utilize the Q and A feature on Zoom to do so. And we'll give you a few seconds to type any sort of comments or questions. Dr. Scollins, are you able to monitor?
Yes.
Nothing. It's not like I'm texting where you can have those little boxes.
I know.
Yes.
Just giving people a little bit of chance. Usually during my sort of prelude or preface to that, they have some time as well. So seeing that, we'll move on into the medias part of our agenda tonight, which is, as, as usual, the superintendent's report. And as always, I turn the meeting to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Thank you, Chairman McClewen, soon to be vice chair. I want to start off really by thanking you, Craig, for the work you've done over the last few years. It's, I think the chair of a school committee is an awesome responsibility and a huge task generally. But I think what you took on and did is tremendously commendable. The devotion you showed for the town of Cohasset, mostly the students of Cohasset, staff of Cohasset is admirable. I can't even tell you how many hours Craig put in. And remember, these aren't exactly the highest paid positions. I mean. Didn't tell you that. Sorry. But there are, does that change your budget?
It's too late now.
But I mean, in excess of 20, 25, 30 hours at times during the week, particularly as we, we sifted through the pandemic. So I think you did your role really proudly, and I just, just want to say that publicly, thank you very much, Craig.
Thanks, Dr. Sullivan, appreciate that. It's a pleasure.
And it's not like you're going anywhere, you're going to be here, but that is, but you really can feel, should feel very good about the, the work you did. And speaking of feeling good, we had a biggest celebration of the year this past weekend, which was our graduation for the class of 2022. I'll share a few pictures here, which is always fun. Give you a moment to get that one screen in here. Take that back. There we go. And I'll just go back. That's just a preview, don't look. Well, as I said, it was a wonderful, if I didn't, I'll say it, it was a wonderful day. First of all, we had a beautiful day. We was definitely lucky in that, in that regard. A big thank you to the class of Music Circus, they're very generous to provide their amazing facility for us. I mean, how many high schools get to graduate in a top-notch concert venue? I don't, I don't know many. So it was wonderful. This is, as you can see, the 101 graduates lined up, very excited. It was, it was great. It was just great to see their excitement as they walked through our faculty who lined the, the aisles. It's just great. And it started, it was nice to, I shot, I cut this picture myself, the last one I took myself, too. You'll notice the professional progress, and then it poses mine. This is Principal Scott addressing the, the kids for, not the last time, last time he addresses them officially, but as they're, they're getting ready to process, just kind of a wider angle view of that. Hats off to Principal Scott, kudos. I can't think of a, you know, so proud that he's the principal of Cohasset High School, as I know his faculty is as well. And he just does such a great job, as does his whole team, that extends to the whole Cohasset faculty, to Assistant Principal Noise, to Mrs. Stephanie Moriarty, you know, Berkowitz, anybody that helped put this particular graduation on deserves great kudos. But Principal Scott adds a really nice touch with the way he addresses the students. It's, it shows really, I think, the beauty of living in a small community like Cohasset. And you can really see that he knows all of the kids, and, and he's very connected to them. And he addresses, in his addresses, they always mention the students and mention some attributes of them, which I think is very special. You, you don't get that in a larger, a larger school district necessarily. So hats off to him. And we had our three main speakers, we did a grace and order, did a wonderful job, you know, just doing the pledge of allegiance. But we had, this is Ben Ford, who was our valedictorian, also a son of Ron Ford, longtime faculty member here at Cohasset. Ben did a tremendous job, and really is a credit to the class of public schools, as is Bridget Conrad, who is the salutator. Both Bridget and Ben are going to Harvard next year, so it's nice that we'll develop a friend right away going to Harvard, which is kind of cool. We also had Isley Wilson, who did a wonderful job as the class warator. I don't have a picture here of her, of her sneakers, she changed shoes during, I thought, part of the theme of her speech was just the, the one, you can learn a lot by someone based on what they wear for shoes. And hers were very wonderful and flamboyant and green and a lot of spirit. So it was nice, and I think that captures her and her, her message very well. These are just some, some photos of, of happy graduates, and you know, you can picture, does really say, you know, a thousand words. You can see how happy they are, and they should be, nice accomplishment. I like this, because if, if there's anyone who's proud, people are proud, it's this group, right? It's the families who are really proud of their, their students. And then just some, some pictures as they kind of process. By the way, after the Principal Scott photos, these are all Dan Lakey photos, so you can see they're a lot better. And they're, they're given to us courtesy of the Cohasset anchor. And if anyone goes onto their website and sees a photo on there, they've actually generously offered to provide the glossy photo in a spirit of community engagement. I think that was very classy and nice.
They took a picture of every single graduate getting their diploma.
I believe, I don't know that they did.
They did.
Okay, that's great.
It's on there, so if your child graduated, you can absolutely get a perfect picture of them right after they received the diploma, they're sitting there posing with it.
Yes.
It's, it's pretty awesome they did that.
That's good. So these are just great, great photos, young men who's going to the Air Force Academy. Congratulations to him, and there's, there's a few young people. It was very nice to see the school committee happen to me at this as well. It's always wonderful to see the faculty, it's just such a special culminating event. So thank you very much for being there. That's Jenna, as you know, one of our school committee liaisons. I couldn't find the one of Jake, I would have put that in there too, but you know, it's just a sampling. Some of our esteemed faculty, and I'm so appreciative they were there in support of the students, had to be a proud moment for all of them. And this is the front row.
Class officers.
Yep, our class officers, and you can see as, as it goes. I think he's a little bit happy. He should be, well deserved. There's the end of the, it was stuck because it was indoors, and there was actually like a false cap toss. They did it, and Principal Scott said, did you listen? You know, and then they did it again. So this class might be noted as doing two cap tosses, which isn't a bad thing necessarily, but they cut a piece of that. Just, they're applauding their classmates, and it's really a special class in that way, very close knit, you could tell. And were just so well spoken of by everyone throughout their whole, the whole year really. But particularly as they, they moved towards graduation, I can't even tell you how many faculty members said to me separately, what a wonderful group they were, and that they just were always like that. So it's, it's a nice, a nice thing to be said of. So I wanted to just start with that, I thought that was a wonderful, wonderful day for us.
Kind of what it's all about.
It, it is certainly what it's all about. And then a couple of other events that we had that were very nice this week. We had a spelling bee, some bees at Deer Hill, third, fourth, and fifth grade. Those students can really spell. It was a great, great community event, very nice. Thank you, Principal Sullivan, for that. We had our kindergarten orientation, thank you, Principal Farrell, for that. And we had, for, for.
Next year's students.
For next year's students. And also for our families.
Yes.
Yes, so we had over 100 families there, and we were able to use our school bus to give some of our students a ride.
Preschool students got a ride, the various preschoolers sent their preschool students over to Osgood, so they get an outside view, and then they'll get an inside view in a couple of weeks.
That's right. And we were able to pick up at the carriage house in the community center, so. It's just part of, I've talked a lot about transitions, and it was nice to see that. Our first transition happening with both our students and families. We had a coalition awards from Safe Harbors, which was wonderful, because Safe Harbors is now about around for five years. And it's amazing to think of all they've accomplished in five years, and kudos to Chris, who started it, Nicole, and though anyone who's involved with Safe Harbors. And I'm particularly thankful that they've involved our youth ambassadors, it's been a wonderful connection to our, our kids. And that's great. And we have some sports teams that are still moving along. I don't know what was happening out there earlier, but you know, our lacrosse teams were doing well, our tennis teams and, and more. So I'll have more reports on that maybe next time. A couple of substantive informational issues I wanted to talk about. One is the track and turf. If you remember this time last year, we were hoping we were able to get it going last year. We've hit a few snags in supply chain. As you can, as you all know, supplies in every, in every aspect of society are, are pets and, and not as available as they've been. We've run into a kind of a hitch in the supply chain for the turf material, not so for the track. So what we're going to do in the interest of ensuring that our fall sports teams can participate and not be affected with that, what we're going to do is we're going to put the track in, which we believe we can have done in eight weeks. That's, we think we can do that confidently, and then be able to have our, our full season on the turf. It's still a safe surface, it's nearing the end of life, but we did not want to interrupt that. And there's just no way, based on the supply chain, that we're going to be able to have that material ready. So we wanted to put that out there now, so that everyone knew and there'd be no confusion about what's happening with our fall sports teams. I don't think they had a question about that, or move on to that. Okay, so, and then next is our school buses. You may, obviously, we've had a school bus driver shortage, but some of you may not know that we've also had some issues with where we're parking our buses. And right now, we are parking it in a private business person's lot, and we're thankful for that on, on 3A. But we are obviously looking for more long-term solutions as to where to put our buses. We had a discussion with Michelle Leary, who's the assistant town manager, procurement officer. And we have come up with a solution that we want to talk about in more depth. And as we've typically done with school committee meetings, we've introduced something, socialized it, and then talked about it more in-depthly at the next meeting, giving people notice that we are going to be talking about it. And this would be the building of a, on a small parcel of land, which I'll try to show you here. Hopefully I can do this successfully. So you'll be able to see it. This is, as you can see, this is Osgood, maybe I can make this a little bit bigger. Quite frankly, couldn't be smaller. Awkward, there we go. I got it. Okay, so you can see Osgood School over to. Can I cursor? No, right there. Osgood School is right over here. So this is, it's a parcel of land that really kind of abuts the softball field, and is sort of in between Osgood and Deer Hill. And the idea would be, this would be a parcel of land that would be developed with the intent of at least temporarily placing our school buses there. There may be a, a long-term solution that we look at, but this would be a lot, it's, it's quite a distance away from any residential area. It's over 460 feet. And there is a, I would say, a pretty healthy buffer of trees between pasture and this, and then I guess the Cook Estates in, and this particular plot of land. So that shouldn't be an issue, but again, we're putting it out there in the interest of being open and transparent for people to be able to talk. This would be, from the information I have right now, it would be dense gravel. It would not be a paved area, and I believe that's because of the wetlands. That, I, I may be incorrect with that, but I believe that's the situation right now. And if it was not a long-term solution for our buses, it would still serve the purpose of being a parking lot for access to the fields. And it would also provide some more parking for, I, what I would say is a very heated, and I'm looking at our two principals. We, when we have one event, and everyone knows this, either at Osgood or Deer Hill, every spot humanly possible is taken, including every spot that's available on the lawn. So it'd be nice to have a little bit of a, of an area there to park, if it doesn't end up being a long-term parcel for our school buses. So again, I, I'm not saying this right now to open up a big discussion, but I am just putting it out there as a, as a situation that we'll be discussing in more depth, I believe, Chairman McClewen, if I'm correct, on July 22nd.
Yeah.
June 22nd.
I just want to add, you know, people see the plans, they might think it's, it's sort of in the final stages, it's not. That was something you have to engineer before you even can talk about whether it's a viable option, because there were wetlands and the drainage issue, that's why it can't be paved. It's something that is likely going to be a valuable resource to us, we're going to strongly consider it, but it requires obviously funding, and we're, we're trying to figure that out as well. So what all we're doing here is, as, as, as we've started to do in, in recent years at the school committee, is just to, where we know folks may have some input or perspectives to share regarding something of impact, we just want to bring it up so that, you know, everyone knows that this is coming down the pike, so to speak. It is not going to be like presented for like a vote for approval of the project next meeting or anything like that. But we want you to know, because we, we have to find a solution for the bus parking situation, because parking it on private parcels is not a viable option, because we, we hemorrhage money in paying rent for that space. It's not free. So those, those, those monies can be allocated towards district-specific resources as opposed to, you know, someone's rent for, for the bus parking. So that's one major reason why we're looking at it, and there may be some, some grant-type funding that we can use to, to get this done in the, in the near future. And, and the timeline is, is, you know, as soon as possible, but we have to, you know, go through the motions. So any questions from any members of the school committee, Mr. Carr?
Great suggestion.
Mr. Dial?
Is it, is it potentially a design issue that those two buses are colliding?
Yeah, I don't think that's actually how they're going to be parked.
Okay. I just don't think we should do one where it's just preordained that there were bus wrecks in the lawn.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
No, no other questions.
Thank you for that, Mr. Dial.
You're welcome.
Mr. Kearney?
Adding value.
Ms. St. Orange?
Because it's near wetlands, does it have to go through the, like, the conservation committee? Speaking as someone who abuts wetlands on my own property and has to talk to them frequently about things, you know?
My understanding is that, well, first of all, yes, I believe it would. I don't know what the status of that is to date. I believe that they were certainly involved in this, because that's why the, the gravel suggestion as opposed to a paved. But I don't know, again, this is, this is still pretty early. But if we decide to move on it, it will move fairly fast, it's probably going to sort. But we won't do that until the community has a chance to digest this.
Absolutely.
I don't know the answer to the question.
And then, and then obviously, there would be lighting there, right?
Yes.
To have a safe parking lot.
Yep.
And then how is that introduced to the neighbors?
So we would obviously want to socialize it at the school committee level.
Right. But a lot of the neighbors like don't, aren't listening to the school committee.
Yeah, well, we're going to message it separately too. So this is, this is just right now, the school committee, we, we will message about this, this thing, so that, so that people are aware.
Yeah.
You know, we want everyone to be, that wants to be aware, to be aware, but when we do have a more robust discussion about it. But this is the first time we're telling anyone about it.
Of course. And then on this diagram, my understanding, as opposed to Mr. Dial's understanding, that is how a bus would back in, right, to their spot, and then is the other side of the lot car parking? Just because if it only accommodates buses, then it's not really overflow parking? Because buses would be there when any school day event would be going on.
Well, I meant, I mentioned that only because this may not be the actual long-term solution for buses. There's some other ideas in, in the community. So just putting it out there that if it, if it, if that ended up coming to fruition, I mean, another place for the, for the buses that would afford a space for like a bathroom facility, an office, whatever, maybe a multi-use with other town departments, this would still be a viable space for parking at fields and cars. So I, I think it's a win-win.
Yeah.
In terms of what we need for our schools.
Oh yeah, I'm just curious, if like in the interim, and I understand this is preliminary.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking, if original design includes bus parking and then car parking.
I believe there is some, there, there's space for some parking, but I don't know that it would be a lot.
Right, but any cars are.
Is better than.
Yeah. Yeah. And it saves our precious lawn, that is always parked upon.
Definitely.
Right? So, okay, great, that's all for now.
I know there'll be a lot more talk, but.
Anything from the community, Dr. Scollins? Okay, thanks, Dr. Sullivan.
Super. And then I also wanted to mention that we had a further safety meetings, we've continued to have that. Chairman McClewen joined us today, as, as well as Chief Pigly, Lieutenant Loops, Officer Taylor, my whole leadership team. And we talked about some further measures that we, we could put into place, one of which I've mentioned, but we've really firmed it up now, and we do have police that will be in our schools in workspaces. Basically, the way it's working is that when, when there's reports that need to be written, and we have officers on a shift, they can come into our schools to do work, and we have places set for them. It just adds more police presence in our, in our buildings in a very appropriate way. That, that is, I, I view as a very good thing, and I think we're all very thankful. That that is, I I view as a very good thing. I think we're all very thankful for that. And we really have been talking about and looking at our egresses, our entrances, our structures for making sure that all of them are secure, advanced. We're we're really going to be adamant about, we have been, but we're, I just want everyone to hear this, because we're going to be very adamant about IDs. Even if we know you, if you come in and you don't have your ID, we we will not let you in until we can clear that you are. Because remember, the the way the Raptor system or the lobby guards work is that we have to, it ensures it's 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 very contemporary. So we may know somebody, but it may be a situation that happens that, you know, there's a restraining order or there's something else that on this particular day, it's changed. And we just have to be aware of that across the district to make sure we have safety. So I we're going to be making that really clear that people will be, even if we know you, we're going to make sure that you have your ID. And if you don't have your ID, then we're going to have to, you know, make sure that an officer clears you to be able to come in. We're just going to be very strict and safe. So I wanted to put out there that to the school committee so that they understand it. And we'll be, and this is all all well intended for the safety of everybody in Cohasset. So we'll be messaging that as we go forward. If you might add anything to that, Chairman McClellan.
Just want to add something to the police officers' presence. So just to clarify, it's going to be an opportunity to be a space in any in in each one of the buildings.
Yes.
So Ausgood, Deer Hill, and Middle High School.
Well, no, actually, Ausgood, Deer Hill, Middle School, High School.
Middle School and High School. They're going to have separate. Okay, great. So that space will be available to officers during any non patrol time.
That's right.
So it's not just report writing, but in in, you you know, in the like a police officer, you're on patrol, sometimes you're not. But rather than having to report back to the station to to do other tasks, they now have the opportunity, and from my understanding, speaking, which you quickly will take advantage of, being at the school remote satellite locations, which is actually closer to three A for them, where, you know, other calls come in. So it it will be advantageous for them from from that, from policing, community policing perspective as well. But this will enable us to have uniformed officers and marked cruisers, marked marked cars, marked vehicles in in front of the school. So increase that police presence. So it's a, it was a wonderful suggestion from our chief of police. And the police have been wonderful partners, just amazing participation from them in the meeting today. And we're really lucky to have such a great collaborative relationship with them. But I just want to add that just to clarify exactly what it was. It's it's going to be, it's it's going to be, I think, impactful and and, you know, not insubstantial, I think.
I would agree. We have really a lot of work planned this summer to look at safety with our safety officials and also some outside experts who have done some work to view our schools and to to determine what how we can improve. And that's that's going to be a nice meet, those are going to be nice meetings. And they're going to also spill into our trainings with our staff, which are going to happen earlier than it ever happened this year. So I think that's important to make sure everybody's on the same page to keep us as safe as we possibly can.
And the safety conversations happen with regularity anyway. But in light of recent events, it, I think, was incumbent upon us to shed a, you know, a targeted light on it, you know, at this timeframe, just to be sure that we're keeping the gloves up, so to speak, for the rest of the school year and making sure that everyone remains vigilant when the weather starts to get warm and people are propping window doors or, you know.
Well, we will be doing.
Stuff and things like that. I know, and just to make sure that we're not doing that sort of thing. And, you know, where kids are going out for outdoor learning experiences, that we're making sure we're being as secure as possible with that, and we're doing those processes. So just sort of reassuring our school community that we are, we're doing that with with some some increased level of scrutiny.
And we certainly are going late this year, so the idea of classes going outside, which is a good thing, is is very, you know, it's going to happen. So we want to make sure that staff also are, you know, reacquainted with the, what they should do when they go outside of the situation. So we're getting into that as well. So it's all good. And without further ado, I'll turn over updates from a student perspective. We have from understeers, who always does such a good job.
Off our stage. Long wait for you tonight.
All right. So the halls have been kind of quiet with the seniors gone. So there's been a little lull after they left, but we have a lot of exciting events coming up. This week, in honor of Pride Month, every single day has been assigned a different color of the rainbow. So today was green, which I participated in. I'm sorry, I changed. Yeah. And then coming up, really exciting, we have class field trips again. So the freshmen will be going to the Science Museum, I believe. And then the sophomores will be going to the aquarium in Boston. And then the juniors will be going to Level Ninety Nine, which is an escape room. I'm excited for that. I've never been to an escape room before. Yeah, and then we have a really exciting event on the seventeenth, where AP students are going to Ausgood and Deer Hill, and we're going to have a diversity fair. So students have been working on that in their classes. And then after that, on the twenty fourth, we're going to have a beach trip of the grades. And in the morning of that, we'll be doing a school cleanup.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm not sure what that consists of quite yet, but I'm excited to help out. And that's basically it. That's all the stuff coming up for us. And, yeah.
Any questions for Mercedes? Mr. Carr?
I want to take them on.
Mr. Dial?
I'm sure Mr. Kearney's happy about the school cleanup, and there was an absence of leaves on the way in, so.
Yeah.
That was that was that was calling, so.
Yeah, okay.
It's the twenty fourth, I believe, is the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll be, I'm going to give you a personal tour on the twenty fifth.
Oh, yeah, I'm looking forward to that.
Mr. Kearney, any questions for Mercedes?
No, I think it's, congratulations. It's just, it sounds like a wonderful year. It sounds like it's the longest year on record. You know, I think of the eighth grade, my son being in the eighth grade, it just seems like it's been two years. I and I do do want to know, just in middle school, they are excited to go to the State House.
That's right.
Some folks, some children are taking the bus and some are taking the boat.
One by land, one by sea?
One by sea. So I just wanted to throw that out there. Hats off to John, because I think that's incredible. My kids are always excited.
Very nice. Very tied to tied, very tied into civics, and also they reached Kill Lockingburg, which is public.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Seong, any questions for Mercedes?
Um, no question. Just thanks for your update. It sounds like a really fun few weeks coming up. It's always a really exciting part of the school year when the field trips happen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mercedes. I think your your penultimate update before the end of the school year, because you're like our last liaison, so you have to go every time now.
She's like, yeah, she has to pick up the slack, right? Good job. And she'll be a senior, senior just in a matter of.
Rising senior, that's right.
That was fast.
All right, well, thank you, Mercedes.
Mercedes, have a great day. So if I may introduce our first presenter tonight, we have a few, but the first guy, Carl, come on up.
Well, I have some documents for Dr. Sullivan and also.
Wonderful.
Also have some diagrams if you want to have them on there.
Sure, thank you. This is Carl, and I'm going to put out your, your name wrong, but is it Fernal?
Yep, Fernal.
And Carl is a junior?
Yep, I'm currently a junior and also a life scout. So the topic I'm going to bring in front of you today is my Eagle Scout project, which is, in brief, a it's pretty much a tool chat for the robotics team, which is down in the middle school, the high school robotics team. And so this pretty much aims to solve two problems. So the first of which is the fact that we have no coherent organization system in the robotics team. So I mean, if you go down there and look, it's actually quite a mess down there. So you can see like tools being strewn around the table, like a hammer taped to the wall. And so.
I've seen it.
Yeah, it is quite a mess. And so the first part of this will aim to kind of have an organization system. As you can see, as I said up there, see I have drawers up there, we can put the tools. And also, I'm going to integrate a charging capability with a power switch in one of them, so you can plug them in while you're there over time. I can't tell you how many times I, as a lead programmer, I tried to plug my computer into the core of the robot. It just doesn't turn on because somebody forgot to plug it in. And so that will solve the first problem. And the second problem is that if you look down the document, the second one down is that it'd be a transportation device for the robot. And so something noticed when we take it to competitions, it kind of tends, some nuts tend to fall, it's some bolts tend to get loose. And that's just because you can just throw it in the back of whoever wants to take it in the car.
Yes.
And so when we already have competitions, want to be programming it to the best of its ability, or when we have to put it back together, that tends to hamper our abilities. So I kind of want to, I designed that in mind, just so we can put in there, it's square, so it fits in pretty much anything. It's actually padded with foam, so in case if it get bumped around, it can kind of absorb that.
That's right.
And yeah, so that's basically two designed by functions. This is going to be a gift to the school committee for my Eagle Scout project. It will all be designed by me and two volunteers of two twenty eight and any other, anybody else.
Love it.
And so that's my project in brief.
And Carl, you know, you were on the robotics team. Can you tell a little bit about your competitions? I I tried to bring those to the newsletter a bit, but I don't know if I did it, did it justice. Can you tell a little bit about where you went this year and kind of how you achieved?
Yeah, so I think this year I went to Natick for the Natick High School for the robotics. It's hosted by a local, or I guess somewhat local high school in Massachusetts. And we go there every year, we qualify. This year, we came within an inch of getting this state qualifying, unfortunately. But, yeah, and so we just go there, we run some, we run some, get some runs against other teams. And it's come, like, we, it's like a round robin system, we go against every other team, and whichever team wins, so it's the best. So this year especially, we had some problems with charging, for example, and that's why this. Yeah. I think it would be huge help, because it's also inspired by Sully Mulhern's Eagle Scout project, which is a, who he designed a playing field for us to practice on. So I think that I'm kind of drawing on inspiration from his project to robotics team too.
That's wonderful. And you'll be happy to know we have a robotics class coming into the middle school.
Really? That's.
So it's going to be really nice in the future of.
Yeah.
Of these robotics will, you know, the students will definitely profit from this.
Thank you.
That's great. So questions from the school committee?
Mr. Carr?
That's a terrific, great idea.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Mr. Dial?
What what material are you planning to use?
Something just using a very, I would, you're going to reinforce with, I think, yeah, twenty four, I think. I I forgot the list, but it's going to be using rubber to reinforce and just plywood at the back. You're going to use like foam to kind of reinforce the the robot inside the case. And it's like hinges for the drawers and a power strip to go inside one of them to charge all stuff.
Yep.
And so, yeah, I think I'm trying to build it as sturdy as possible, using like thicker plywood if possible, because like it gets kind of get moved around cars, it won't fall apart. And it's going to try to build it with the best I believe, as sturdy as possible.
That's great. Careful with those doors and drawers. They have to be very precise. If some things with drawers and doors, they're always, mine are always crooked.
Yeah.
So and the door always turns sideways. So this is fantastic. Thank you very much for your contributions.
Thank you. Yeah.
Here we go to Mr. Dial's house. Carl, he'll pretty much everything you sit on or use, he's built. And he'll share the story with you and the the pros and cons of that particular project, and it's all very exciting.
That's why I don't give you guesses.
They're like fingerprints. No, no two are alike.
That's not by default.
Mr. Kearney, do you have any questions for Carl?
Carl, good job. You took a problem and came up with a solution.
Thank you.
That is creative. It's well designed. You know, it looked good, maybe putting a Cohasset logo on it.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Get on this.
Yeah.
Oh, does it have one on there?
Oh, I think maybe, yeah.
This one does. This one shows kind of team logo, right?
Oh, yeah.
I see. I put, I put one here.
Step ahead of you. I think I might be an over in start of that.
Yeah, no, no, like I said, you took a problem, create a solution, kind of.
It's like it was robots. He thought of everything. Mr. Seong.
I love this, Carl. It shows great thinking, great problem solving. I'm curious, what year are you? Did you already tell us?
My current junior could be senior next year.
Okay, so then do you tag someone to be like the maintainer of the robot case?
I think it's, I'm trying to design a mind, so it would be pretty maintainable. It's like I, hopefully, like the schools won't fall apart, and I mean, I'm going to try to be as robust as possible.
Yeah.
And so, yeah, I think it should be like Sully Mulhern's project, it's still like with us very solidly today. Because we bring it everywhere pretty much, and, yeah, I'm hoping it will last for years.
That's great. Well, thank you for doing that. Thanks for using your resources and energy to help the robotics team.
Thank you.
Well, probably, maybe this will make a difference for the state qualifiers.
Maybe, yeah.
Keep the children over in the very.
You might see that.
Yes, which I, should I sign, which part should I sign?
Well, why don't we accept it as a gift, we'll have a motion to accept it as a gift for as a.
I think we just have to check mark, because I think this is for you to keep.
Motion being made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second to the motion to accept it? Carl's generous gift. Second by Mr. Carr. All in favor, aye? All opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thanks, Carl. We're very, very appreciative of that. Great idea.
I'm just signing.
Now you can sign.
That's why I wanted to get a head start, you see?
I can keep that out.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Carr. That's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you for coming.
All right. So what's next? Galapagos trip?
Smart way. You lost something. Carl.
Thank you.
There you go. Hi, hi.
Hello.
Hello.
I started the robotics program ten years ago. I did.
You didn't give them a card?
No, we used to bring it in a box.
So Laura, well, that's true.
Yes, thank you.
Laura's going to be presenting about an amazing Galapagos trip.
Yeah, so I think you guys got all the information.
Yeah.
It's for next April vacation. And the itinerary is there. I don't know if you really want to go through the whole thing. It sounds amazing.
I already did. Pretend I was going.
We went with Explorica before in April twelfth through twentieth of two thousand nineteen. We went to Machu Picchu in Peru. We took pictures just like that. I took twenty eight students at that time to Machu Picchu and Peru. We had some agenda issues, some itinerary issues with Explorica, but it was because their people on the ground had changed hands. And we thought we booked, the kids had paid for a hike up Huayna Picchu, which you have to buy in advance. And they never bought the tickets, so we showed up there and they didn't have that on our itinerary. The guy who managed didn't have it. But they were really, really phenomenal about responding to it. I mean, mistakes happen. We all have to be okay with that, and I feel like they did a great job. I've done tours, this will be my tenth, I think I counted last night, the tenth trip that I've taken students on. I always have gone to Latin America, so I feel very comfortable with that. And Explorica, I would really like to use again, because I enjoyed the quality of both the lodging and the food that we received. I just went on Jim Wallace's trip, and it's just like a whole different experience. So I really like how they focus on good, safe, comfortable lodging that I feel comfortable in, and I would feel comfortable staying with my family and really nice quality food. And it's adventure based travel, which as a math teacher, that's what I take kids on. Sometimes we've done a little bit of research in the past, but this doesn't really involve any of that. They don't really set that up with high school students. It's just to go and see the Galapagos. So I think they're a great organization. I'm willing to try with them again. My trip, not through Explorica, but through a different group, got canceled to Thailand right before during coronavirus, that first closed down. And that was really terrible how that company dealt with the cancellation. Brian and I couldn't do anything to move them to respond to the money as they should have, because it wasn't anybody's fault. But we were so close to the trip leaving, but they were just crazy about it being with them in thirty days. So whatever, they're out of business now, so we swore we would never go back again. So you see, that's what happens when they treat people like that. But this group I feel really good about, so I'm here to answer certain questions you might have about and ask for your approval, so I can start holding meetings. Students picked the Galapagos. I never picked the trip. And we've asked the juniors, where would you like to go next year? Usually juniors approach me and say, we just went on Wallace's trip. We'd love to go again. Where are you going, Mrs. Humphrey? And I say, where do you want to go? Go to the site, check it out. And so this is what they picked. So we'll see. It is a little bit expensive, I feel, because usually when we go to Latin America, our price is about two thousand dollars. And it's about a Euro trip price, but it is the Galapagos. The fee for each person to go there is really high, from what I understand. And you have to fly there, that's the way you can get there, so the transportation cost is a little bit higher. But the kids are going to think about maybe a Costa Rica itinerary. If a lot of students come and they're like, this Humphrey, that price is too high, then we'll talk about it as a group. So it could possibly change, but this is, this is their first choice.
Thank you, Mrs. Humphrey. Any questions for Mrs. Humphrey about the Galapagos Islands trip? Mr. Carr?
How many times have you used this group?
This will be my second time. The only time, other time I went with them is to Peru.
Do you know how long they've been in business?
It says they've been in business over fifty years. I think them themselves have been in business since two thousand and sixteen. But they joined forces with this group called World Strides, and they've been fifty plus years with them. So together, they're combined. Experience, I guess, is fifty plus years.
What's the maximum amount of students you can take?
There's no maximum amount of students ever. It, I see how many students sign up, and I see how many people I can convince to go with me, and then we base it on them. We have a proper ratio of students.
It's a nice itinerary.
Yeah, it's very good.
But they don't set a maximum. But they don't set a maximum. And for this kind of trip, we don't have a, we don't need to take a bus. We literally fly and fly and then boat. And she said the boat has a very large capacity. Normally, my trips aren't as big as the Euro trip. That was my biggest one. Machu Picchu was twenty eight. But I usually have between about twenty to twenty five kids.
You're comfortable, I'm sure you're comfortable with twenty or twenty five kids.
Yeah, I am. I love them all.
Thank you, Mr. Carr.
What would the cost be for students?
It's on that sheet about the Galapagos. If you turn it over to the back, it says three thousand nine hundred and twenty six dollars. And the Costa Rica one is two thousand six hundred and eighty four dollars. The Euro trip this year was forty six hundred dollars.
That's that's helpful. And I guess what what's the process? So right now you've got the Galapagos thing. That's what we're you're asking us to approve. If you don't get a critical mass of people, then do you think of a cheaper trip? I guess, how do you think about?
Oh, no, I would just start holding meetings. Who's interested in the school trip for next year? I put up the posters that would say the Galapagos. But then say anybody who's interested, come. And I talk to my classes about it, that are juniors and kids talk to each other, and they come and ask me questions. And then when we get the group in the room, that's what we talk about.
And then what's the what's the ratio of students to?
I think they put that on here too. It's different for different trips, but I think it's one to six.
But okay, one to six. Good, good. That's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Dyle. Mr. Kearney?
First of all, Laura, thank you. He's great. The only one question. It's a year from now with inflation and everything. It's still the same.
The price stays fixed, yeah. So once you say you're gonna do the trip, once you guys approve it, then I click the button that says, we want to try to do this. And then I start trying to enroll kids. We only need one kid to enroll for this price to be fixed.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Ms. Kearney. Ms. Seong.
It just sounds like a really great trip. I'm glad you're doing it. It's so nice that you use your vacation time to take the kids up. I did a lot up at Central High School, and it's some of my favorite memories. It's the reason I went on to study what I did in college. So just saying it's such an awesome experience for kids to have.
Thank you. My daughter Mae went with us on the Peru trip. And right now she's in Peru at this place called Huancayo.
Yeah.
It's a valley in between Machu Picchu and Lima. And so she's there and she's volunteering as a physician's assistant. And she goes around to disabled, to visit the disabled families that have disabled children in care. And she felt comfortable going back to that place and doing this for ten weeks because she went on this trip.
Yeah, I was a Latin American studies major.
Yeah, she was like, that's a place I've been to. I'll be okay. Yeah.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Humphrey, so my question is, it wasn't clear to me, what are the accommodations once you get to the Galapagos? It's there's obviously a hotel on mainland, but then when you when you transfer to the islands, what did what I'm not, I've never been, so.
I've never been either. This will be my first time. I was so excited.
It's exciting. Yeah, so I'm not sure like how.
If you look at the little map here.
Yeah, I saw that.
There's two ways that you can see the Galapagos from what I've learned. You can get on a cruise ship and cruise through a specific section where you sleep on the cruise ship. Or you can stay at one of these two islands that are labeled Santa Cruz and Isabella. They have hotels on those islands. Yeah.
I didn't know if they were camping or something like that, but then I saw seven nights hotel accommodations included in the price.
Well, it's a really nice hotel when you look it up. So I can send you the link if you want to.
No, I was just wondering where they work. If they're if they're indoors, that's sort of my major. I was just wondering if they're camping or not.
Yeah, no, I don't do camping. I camp when I graduated from college for a whole summer. And I said, that's it. I I need a lock on my door. I'll be fine with that. I don't know if I'd be comfortable camping with all of them.
Yes, that's that's I I wouldn't be comfortable with camping with all of them. So.
I like the doors. I go around and check on them.
Glancing.
Maybe.
This is hotel.
Yeah, very nice.
That is my next question. In terms of like the gender segregation in the hotel accommodations, like what what precautions are taken to like to deal with that issue? Like are
I mean, we put them in appropriate rooms, you know. And then I really, if you've been in my classroom, which I think you have been in my classroom. I really love my students and I treat them as if I am their mother. And when I meet with them about this trip and I meet with their parents, I say, you know, nothing will be tolerated. You do anything, I won't hesitate to put you in a plane at your parents' expense and send you home. And everybody knows I'm serious. Like, everybody would say that I'm very loving and caring, but at the same time, I'm really not somebody to mess around.
That's good. You gotta do that. I I went on the eighty trips in high school.
I got that from my own mother.
In Germany, one of the kids, because you could, the drinking was much more lax over there, especially at that time. And they were they were caught doing something and immediately sent home. I mean, it just it's
Yeah, you just have to say that's I haven't had to do it.
No, it wasn't me. I I read. I just, that's it. That's I was just major, I was primarily concerned about, oh, no, passport collection. What's your protocol that you have with that situation?
So on our last trip to Peru, that we had two quins, which is unusual, two male quins, a Quinn and my son Quentin. And the two of them left their passports on the plane. My own kid. And Quinn Walsh left their passports on the plane, and we were already through security. But they were so nice. We just, you know, put a pause on everything and talked to whoever we needed to talk to. And their passports had already been found in their pockets. They'd already gone through and found it in the plane. And so they had us wait and they brought the passports for that for to them and then checked out that they were the right person and that's it. So that's the closer that comes losing a passport. Right now with phones in a meeting, we have everybody scan their passport and their IP card. So everybody has that with them at all times, hopefully, unless they lose their cell phone. Which happened once on a Euro trip that I was on with Mr. Willis. But so they have copies of that, and I have a physical hard copy that I keep with me, zipped in that lining in my luggage if I need to use that as well.
Okay.
So I have a physical hard copy. They all have a scan. Hopefully, they're holding on to their own. Usually, they're so crazy about the passport, like they feel so thrilled up. They have this passport, they're gonna get it stamped, they're not gonna lose it. So usually, they're good, but things can happen.
Yeah, serious document you gotta take care of it.
Yeah.
Okay, especially if you're abroad.
Yeah, and now that vaccine card is just as important.
Yes, yes, yes.
Can I jump in with one other question?
Sure can.
Sorry, I should have done this during my time, but the last trip, cancellation could give refunds. Are we doing the cancellation insurance this time?
Automatically.
Automatically, okay.
So everyone's gonna be required to get that to a hundred and eighty dollars.
Okay. As we learned.
Yeah. It just frustrates everybody.
Those policies, the fine print, those policies.
Well, it said, it said here for any reason. So that's
That's here for.
Here to for there in.
Fill out all their paperwork and turn it into the right place.
All right. Well, any other questions?
Make a motion officially?
We need to make a motion to approve the contemplated Galapagos trip as presented by Ms. Humphries. Humphrey?
So much.
Motion made by Ms. Seong. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Carr. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion unanimously passes. Thank you so much, Ms. Humphrey.
Yay, thank you.
It's gonna be exciting.
They're such great kids. Thank you all for having such great kids.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So if I may move along to our next guest, sign up Tanya if you want to, Ms. Baudel. Here's Tanya Baudel here from our Alternative Energy Convention. And we're very excited to welcome Brianna Walsh, who's from NLX. And I'm gonna let Tanya maybe talk a little bit about about Brianna. And then Brianna, I have given you host access, so you can share your screen when you're ready and present to her.
Okay, so I'm very happy that Pride Day today is green. Because we have some exciting green news to share with you. You might remember last December, the Alternative Energy Committee came to you and said, we have an opportunity to do an electric school bus demonstration project. And the committee said, well, that's great. Go get some details and come back to us. So here we are, but there was a lot of work done in six months. We worked very closely with NLX, with Brianna. We worked very closely with Lydia, who is Alternative Energy Committee liaison. Susan Owen, I want to give a call out to. She's been very attentive. And of course Superintendent Sullivan. So we've been working with the schools. We've also been working with Brianna. Michelle Leary, who is Director of Procurement of the town, and Chris Senior, because it takes a village to bring something like this together. And we have gotten to a point where with a straight face, beyond a straight face, with a lot of excitement, I can come to you and say, we have an opportunity to do a demonstration project. Brianna will get into some of the details, all of the details because of procurement reasons. And I will just say this now because I did not send Brianna the map and I'm sorry, Brianna, but we have already figured out a parking spot for the electric school bus. And so it would be at the rec center where we already have charging stations. The charging station would be a level two charging station that if the bus moves or needs to move, or we convert the fleet, we could just use that level two charging station for anything. And it would have two ports, one for the bus, one for a car, and that's being contributed by National Grid and as part of the lease payment. So put aside the parking issue, it's resolved. We have a good answer for that. And Brianna is now going to talk about who NLX is, what they do, why we have this great opportunity to work with them, and outline the concept. Our understanding is we may have to do a thirty B procurement, and so we're not going to talk about prices right now, but she's gonna outline the concept just to see how you all feel about that. Okay, Brianna, take it away.
Thanks, Tanya. So hopefully you guys can see my slides and hear me okay. Ben, if you can't. Hi, all. Thanks very much for the time tonight and for the introduction, Tanya. My name is Brianna Walsh. I am with NLX. We are a global energy company. And a lot of our US activity, we have about a hundred thousand EV chargers across the US. Strong presence in Massachusetts with various energy projects. And while we're a big company, we also have a very dedicated team. So there's been a particular team looking at this project with Cohasset so far, myself as advisor. And I have a dedicated project manager and technical engineer who are who are looking and working on this. To look a little bit on the timeline and kind of where we've been and where we're going. We first started engagement with Cohasset in the fall. We are introduced by the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center. I know, I think we've got Rachel on the line tonight from Mass C E C. We have a grant from Mass C E C to do an electric school bus pilot project in Massachusetts. The objective to further electric bus adoption in Massachusetts and learn through the process. We have objectives also of exploring how the bus can participate in grid services programs. So we started the conversation in the fall with a little bit with Lydia and the Alternative Energy Committee. And most of what we've been doing in the beginning of this year is just going into more of what this project looks like, understanding questions and concerns, and scoping out several different options for how we can partner with Cohasset on this demonstration project. So we're here at the school committee. What is kind of ahead of us on timeline is finalizing some details of the project and the contracting process. We kind of have timeline progresses as we as we anticipate with order buses in August. Part of that timeline is to get Cohasset Electric School Bus by September twenty twenty three for the that that school year. But also, you may have seen in, you know, the news, the EPA has a lot of federal funding available for school buses. Those orders will come in late August, early September, early September, no, late September, early October. We want to get ahead of that. And that's something my team watches really closely is is funding. We can bring to towns such as Cohasset. The EPA funding does not fit what kind of Cohasset is eligible for, so we're really excited that we can bring this grant from Mass C E C and a few other funds. And then how this project works, our role in this project is to partner and simplify the change for Cohasset. To give Cohasset one electric bus parked at the rec center, one charging station can charge the bus and charge other EVs. We will, for one kind of set fee that doesn't change each year, it's a set fee, cover the bus, the charger, cover all electricity costs and maintenance, and really manage the project and the coordination between the different stakeholders that are involved in getting this project up and up and going. And and we've, what Tanya said, kind of already engaged and talked to some of these stakeholders to get conversations going and discussion of the project. So benefits electric school bus, I want to kind of say first here, there's a lot about, you know, change in Massachusetts. And starting to progress with electrification of transportation is a big movement we see in Massachusetts. I know Cohasset has many charging stations in the town already. And this is a way for the school to take one step with just one bus, not kind of the whole fleet, and and do a demonstration project. When we looked at options that we've discussed so far with the with Cohasset has been aligning on a five year demonstration project. We also looked at options for a seven year or a engagement that Cohasset would own the bus at the end of the project. And of the four options, we looked at the one that we're recommending and kind of in in further conversations with is to bring some cost savings compared to the current diesel bus cost. So that Cohasset in their annual budget sees a little bit of cost reduction on that operating expense line. And so there are kind of a few other things on this deck, but this is my last slide. That's the outline. Really appreciate the chance to share this project with the full school committee. Tanya said we've met with several groups so far and would welcome kind of questions and conversation. But want to move forward with this demonstration project and bringing electric bus to Cohasset.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walsh. Any questions for Ms. Walsh or Ms. Baudel regarding the demonstration project, the EV bus demonstration project? With the understanding that what they would be seeking tonight is preliminary approval as to demonstrate further commitment to this demonstration project as the procurement process is still being navigated, negotiated a bit. So understanding that that will be what we're voting on tonight is to preliminary approval because there is no pricing specifics yet. Are there any questions for either of our presenters? Mr. Carr?
Well, so I follow this topic, as you might imagine, very closely. Look, I would just say, in addition to this opportunity, which I think is a great idea, Cohasset has led a lot of communities around here in the way they look at energy solutions. And so I see this very much as part of that energy solution for the town. I think it's a terrific idea. And ten years from now, all of these buses are gonna be electric. And I think it's a, it shows real leadership where the town in Cohasset could be one of the first communities to have this kind of program. So I think it's a great idea.
Well said, Mr. Carr. Mr. Dial?
On the parking, the the spot by the rec center, is there, kind of building on your question earlier about the other parking question. Has there been community engagement? Because that parking lot often gets filled. I know I dropped my my sons off at the rec center for various activities and it's there. You know, several spaces are taken by bus that might not be welcomed by people who try and go there. Has it been vetted with the rec center and approved? Are there stakeholders on that? I guess, how do we get feel about getting input on that process?
Right. And so this was something we learned today from Michelle Leary, that this was a spot that the town was offering up as part of this demonstration project. If through the course of the finalization of the contract, we feel that there's a different spot, we certainly can engage in community engagement to find out what would be better. I think the rec center was looked at as an opportunity because it already has charging stations, as you know. It's the rec center, so they may be used for the electric bus during the summer or in other school activities that interact. So I think that was the thought. I think the town felt they wanted to give some assurance that the town was on board with this, and there was at least a spot. Whether it's the best spot, whether it's the final spot, is up for discussion.
And that parcel that I mentioned earlier, from my understanding, is that that will also be outfitted with the electric.
And why charges?
Yeah.
Hand crank lights. And I guess have we had discussions from the operational side at the schools, would this replace an existing bus? Would this be an additional bus? Do we need special driver education, I guess?
I I don't believe so, but I would defer. I know Sue is on this call. Sue, do you have any answers to that?
Yes. So I think the plan is, I mean, we, we own, we own a bus outright already. So we're currently running eight buses, so we would probably lease lease seven diesel buses and then the electric bus would be eight and then we would still own one additional bus. I know this training that has to be done because obviously it's, it's different. They don't need any, any additional licensing or anything. It's just a matter of training.
I think the training is like 10 hours.
Thank you, Sue.
I also.
I guess, so, I mean, obviously, for me, most important is getting kids school and doing efficiently. I like the idea that we could do this more efficiently, cost savings, mission directions. These are great and possibly more, more stable bus. But I guess all these factors will need to be presented to us. But we're asking for preliminary, what is the preliminary approval then?
Just so we can demonstrate a further commitment to the project, so that when they're, so, so there's a point to going and chasing down these other issues like the procurement issues and figuring that out. Otherwise, people are spinning their wheels, you know, they, they want to make sure that the schools are committed to the project. Obviously, we're not committing to any certain price because we don't know what the prices are. That's going to have to be presented, but if we show by a majority vote that we're interested in making this happen, given the information that we've learned today, then it makes more sense for them to continue with the process. If we're going to say, no, this doesn't really sound like something we're interested in, then obviously they would not continue with that. Is that, Mr. Kenny?
Well, thank you. I think this is fantastic. I came with my electric truck. I'm totally on board with this. Do we know where the buses are made? Are they American made or?
So that's the answer I was going to give before the question came. So I'm glad you asked that question. They are the same bus makers, so Bluebird, Thomas, and there's a third. And the nice thing is, we, as Brianna said, we're trying to get in front of the nav rush from the EPA money, $500 million coming to grants that will be awarded in September. And there's $5 billion over the course of five years that the EPA is awarding under the infrastructure bill.
Okay.
We're not convinced Cohasset will be able to get any of that, but we're going to try. But the nice thing is at the end of that five years, the electric buses, we hope will be down the cost curve because of that infusion of $5 billion, which means we will have all of the data, all the information. We'll decide do we like it, do we not like it, what works, what doesn't work, what do we want to do next time? So that at the end of that five-year EPA money, we have five years of data. We have that bus lease expiring and then we can make the next set of decisions in a very informed data-driven way.
Great. And thank you for listening, Lydia. Thank you. I think this is great. I think, thank all the folks who've taken time to do this. Yeah, I'm in full support. I just think it's funny because the training part of it is important because I had an electric car. And when I first went to go buy it, none of, no, everybody kept trying to jump the car, like trying to jump, they're jumping. Well, it doesn't make any noise. The car was running. Right. So nobody knew that the car was running. The salesman was like, let me go get a jump start. And then I went back here and I looked at it and I said, I think you just pushed the button. It's amazing that, so there is a concern there because like you can hear the bus coming. Here, it's like you don't hear the bus coming.
So I think, I mean, Brianna, you can answer this because you have, how many electric buses that you help manage?
Yeah, globally, ANL serves about 3,000 electric buses. And the questions on training are a great question. Training will definitely be part of what we build into the plan, kind of as buses arrive and ongoing. We also will be looking at different driver efficiency because you can do the training, but then different, different drivers will have kind of understood different functionality in different ways. But we want to make sure that, you know, not only drivers have the initial training, but that we then see all of them using the bus really efficiently and that we see them having understood the different functionality around regenerative braking, for example, that, that the buses have. So there's a learning curve, but the support will be there for it. And the manufacturers that Tanya mentioned, they're, you know, the main bus manufacturers and they're thinking about safety a lot. And so some of the same, you know, all of the same features are there, plus some additional ones to make sure these electric buses are getting students to school and home as they need to.
Oh, it announces survival in a robotic voice. I do like that. No, seriously, there is another question, the fact that, are they going to have all 360 cameras?
We can customize the buses in a particular order, just in the same way Cohasset has asked for buses in the past.
Okay, so what that means is the drivers can see all, yes, right now they're only 180.
That's correct.
360, settle for 180. That's good. So those are the things that we can look at when we go to look at the bus. Do we want 360 cameras? Do we want seat belts? And I'm also concerned about the power of the bus, like I had an electric car. I just couldn't get up my driver. That's why I got rid of it.
I just remembered from an earlier presentation that the buses that they proposed to Cohasset were all for like northern cold territories. And they've been used in other parts of the country that have similar climates. So they weren't going to propose something that would be great in Florida or Texas.
Right, right. Like, that's, that's exactly what happened. Then you get electric car, my brother has a Tesla, they can beat a Ferrari here. So I mean, you do, it just depends on the.
Great, thank you, Mr. Kenny. Mrs. St. Ange?
I have more of a comment, less of a question. As a driver of a diesel vehicle, I just think, what a great time to be considering electric rather than the cost of fuel. I mean, you can drive many more miles on diesel than gas, but man, it's getting expensive and there's just less of it made. So it's going to continue to be expensive. So I think as we are looking at our budget and our, you know, we don't want to pay for parking spots and we don't want to be spending extra money on anything because we want to put it towards our students and our schools, let's not put it towards more diesel. Right?
Okay, thank you. I, yeah, I just have a comment. I just want to thank, well, thank you very much, Ms. Walsh, for the presentation tonight. We'll pick a vote and I just wanted to thank Ms. Fodel for being a real unsung hero of Cohasset. I think that, you know, we've seen her a number of times with regards to the school-related alternative energy concepts, but that's really just the tip of the iceberg with all the work that she does. And it is a subject matter, clean, sustainable energy. Is, is, I think, an issue that needs to be addressed with, with the urgency that you, that you attend to it. So thank you so much for doing that for our community. It's a really important thing. As we continue to completely abuse this planet. So thank you so much.
We'll be back to talk about solar on top of the new parking lot at some point in the future.
New schools with new solar roofs.
Anytime there's a new roof, we're on it. So we'll be back, but we do think this is a very exciting no-brainer project and we appreciate you giving us the authority to proceed with looking into it and presenting it to you tonight.
Okay, well, thank you. So is there, so what we're seeking is a motion to preliminarily approve the demonstration ebus project pending further procurement and pricing information.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Kenny. Is there a second? I think the subject car raised his hand, second by Mr. Carr, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion unanimously passes. Thank you so much. Fodel and Ms. Walsh.
Thank you. Have a great night.
Okay, the four principals that have been.
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing like a, what are we, what are we going on now, guys? A 13-hour workday, 13 and a half hour workday?
Well, it's not a busy time of year, so I think.
No, we have an art show to.
I'm just so excited it's not dark out. It feels like 4 o'clock.
Well, we'll keep it here a few more hours. Let's, let's move that down the agenda. So Doug Sullivan, who's next? Who's first?
So I believe if you just go by the agenda, I feel like, well, Lisa gets the shoulder to stick here all the time, but. I know. Principal Sullivan, if you would.
As I share to the wolves.
I know, I don't know how to go about this chair.
So.
Where am I starting with?
So I want to, first of all, say that we're combining the presentations. Sometimes we do have the school improvement plans in a separate evening than we, and then we present the handbooks. The, both the handbooks and the school improvement plans are the work of school councils. School councils are made of equal representation, families and administration slash teachers. So it's very much a, a community-driven, school community-driven enterprise. It's really the, it's only the school council that can actually create the, the handbooks and the school improvement plans, which the school committee approves. On top of that, I've asked all the superintendents and actually I didn't even have to ask it because it's really part of our strategic plan to look at their family engagement strategies and to get a survey out there to families to see what families are feeling can be improved and what are some of the things that are really working. So I asked all, all the principals to do that and that I said.
You did. But we knew, we knew where you're going.
Well, I do think that they are, yeah. But all of the principals to do that to, now I'm going to be a principal. There was a Principal Sullivan in the district. But in order to, in order to just get a feeling for, for, you know, how things were going. If you don't ask those questions, you don't get that information. So where, what I'd like for, I've asked Principal Sullivan, Principal Farrell to do today is to kind of go quickly through their survey, highlighting some of the areas of strength and some of the areas of growth, and then to move into their handbooks and then their improvement plan. Dr. Sullivan, do you want to preface the, one of the changes that we will not see in the, in the handbooks that we will be talking about in a future school committee meeting, just to save you from having to do that?
So one of the things that we needed to address was the law, chapter 76, section one, around student attendance. So the school committee, subcommittee policy, and then eventually the school committee approved the new policy around attendance and the fact that we have to notify families around attendance. And the purpose of this law is really to address chronic absenteeism and the fact that you can't teach an empty seat. So, and it is an epidemic across the country around students not getting to school. So that law was enacted to be put in policy. However, while we were putting in the policy, we were also up handed. And so we didn't feel like it was appropriate to enact the parent family notification on student absences in a time when we were just trying to figure out how to support our families and our students and our teachers. So that will go into effect in the fall of this year. However, we want to make sure that the handbook language between all of the, all of the schools was the same in certain areas. The high school will have a little bit different because they have to really discuss credit and attendance. But elementary and middle school don't have that same key. So we're pretty close to our language, but we really wanted to make sure that you really felt comfortable with it because it is a shift. And it really, really delineate what is excused and what is not excused. And the notification is that every, every time there are five absences or accumulation of five unexcused absences, we are bound to notify the family. And when it escalates up to 10 or more days, I mean, usually it's in blocks of five, we are required to not only notify families, but in meet with families and the students, depending on the age of students, to work on making sure that that child gets and figuring those pieces out. So we haven't completed our language, but I just wanted to say that we'll be bringing that on June 22nd when the high school and the middle school comes with their handbooks. We will have that all set up and then families will be notified. We don't want people to be surprised. So we'll make sure that families understand what that is also prior to the start of school.
And just to say, this is following the regulations. We are a community. We work with families. We, so no one should feel that it's anything but just us making sure we're compliant, following the rules and, you know, obviously making a priority, getting our students here and working with families to help them with that. So that's really the idea of it. And the other thing I'll say about the school improvement plans and our role, the school improvement plans, you'll see a lot of language that is a carryover from our previous year because we have a three-year strategic plan and that's intentional. So you see, you'll see some of, some very similar goals that are just further. Yeah, and you'll see some new things, but that's, that's going to be a trend for obviously the duration of the three-year strategic plan because that's the idea of a strategic plan. You got it.
So now we're really going to let you talk.
It's all good. Time's up. I'm just kidding. So yes, so I am going to start with the family-school relationship survey because that really, as Dr. Sullivan said, there's a lot of carryover from our plan, but this really drove the changes we did make to our action items. But I do want to start, start by acknowledging my school council because it's a highly effective group. I really enjoy them. I'm sad I've got some members that are, they're sunsetting. But I have a co-chair, parent representative Allison Corbett. I have Lauren Wagner. I have maybe familiar name, Jen Dial. So she's been a great.
Her husband makes fun of your chair.
And then my teacher members are Karen Johnston and Brett Umans. And then my school committee liaison is Mrs. Lydia St. Ange. So it's a great committee, a great council, and I'm really proud of the work that we do. I find that we're a pretty well-oiled machine, Lydia. We really get it done. So, and we kind of have a good time too. We enjoy each other. So it's been great. So with that, this is actually the first family survey that I've done in my tenure at Dear Hell, because of all those things that shall go unnamed. And we did, again, we, we built it based on our strategic plan because we always are trying to show that alignment. And so we organized it around the four compass points. And so we wanted to try and keep it tight and concise. So as I move through this presentation, these are the, the, I don't know if they're really questions, but kind of the statements we asked families to respond to for compass point one, teaching and learning. And so then what I'll do from here is just highlight which were our really, our areas of strength and then what are our takeaways. So an area of strength for our teaching and learning was that idea that the inclusivity, the diversity, and the multiple perspectives that we bring to our curriculum. And this really, and alongside that, we were commended for our academic learning environment and as well as that idea that we're looking at organizational skills and a growth mindset. And so kind of what, what fuels our learners and their success.
Did you have a good participation rate?
I think we had about 100, just under 100. So I don't think that's bad. And again, we had some support from the PSO in road there and so they also. She's very busy. And so that helped really get the word out. But I felt like this, these strength areas really spoke to that, again, that alignment with our strategic plan and our commitment to really living our school improvement plan. And so these were things that were evident in those plans and then, and we were successful in that. In terms of our areas of growth, and I do want to stress, like, I actually am really pleased with the outcomes of all of our responses. You know, we welcome that, that positive, positive feedback, of course. We're also really interested in that more constructive criticism. But I think overall our pie charts look really pretty. And so even our areas of growth, I feel like, you know, I feel good about where we are and where we need to go. And so looking at this, the, the area of growth was that we, teachers know my child's academic level and are providing appropriate support and or enrichment. Looking at this, my takeaways from this are that we are, it speaks to the need for better communication about what we already do in some things. So I think some of these pieces isn't so much that it's an absence in what we do. It's an absence of communicating what we do. And so I think that we can look at ways that we can, you know, target instruction for students at all levels, for sure. I think that's always something we can improve upon. But I do think that, you know, a lot of this is a communication piece. So we're going to work on developing that more explicit communication and, and then also work on improving the practice as well. Social emotional wellness, give you a second to review the target areas that we were looking for feedback. And then in terms of our areas of strength, I have to say, above and beyond all else in this survey, how wonderful that the overwhelming strength was that my child enjoys going. Because, you know, the bottom line is we want them coming in the doors and we want them coming in the doors happy. We want them happy to be there. And this speaks to that we're, we're doing a pretty good job with that. Keep the joy, exactly. Like, I was born. Like, I was born and raised at Deer Hill and it really is a huge part of how we approach our days. Other areas of strength is that commitment to social emotional wellness. You know, not only through programs, you know, concrete programs such as Responsive Classroom, but also just how we interact with students and how we recognize those kinds of needs through the strength of our adjustment counselors and just our own teachers and staff making connections. Also recognizing that we are working and succeeding in some of our, again, these inclusivity practices. The other one I really wanted to highlight that I feel really good about is that idea that students at Deer Hill feel that they're trusted adults for them in the building. And in many of my conversations with families, I talk about that idea that it's not, I don't want a student to feel like this is my teacher, they're my person. I want them to feel like they can name multiple people in the building, including myself, that they feel really good and comfortable going to. You know, I'm not, you know, the place you go when you're bad. I'm the place you go when you have a problem and you need help constructing a solution. So like, you know, I always tell the kids, I'm a problem solver and you're here because you have a problem and let's figure it out. And figure out what we do there. So really building that idea of trusted adults, that was, that was a huge win for me.
That's why I was.
And our school.
I was very interested.
Exactly. But I didn't solve your problem.
That's okay.
It's, it was a lost and found problem.
We lost glasses, just for the record.
In terms of our areas of growth, the idea that Deer Hill provides strategy, supports, and an environment that promotes positive peer relationships. So kind of on the other end of the spectrum from that idea of trusted adults is how, how are our peer relationships looking? And I am gonna lean a little bit into the pandemic on this one and then I think that that is an area where students, you know, suffered over the last couple of years. And, and that's, and the opportunities to develop those kind of relationships. And so as a takeaway, that's what we want to do is identify those additional opportunities and then also identify additional strategies in supporting students with those opportunities. We use WIT in our school, which is that idea that if you have a problem with another individual, you walk away, you ignore, you talk it out, you tell an adult. That is ingrained in all our students. If you walk up to them, they will tell you that. We also are very beholden to the skipper creed. We are safe, respectful, responsible. So those will remain our anchors, but I think there are little nuances and things we can continue to do to give students tools and then also building on some of our really great enrichment programs to provide more social opportunities for students through some of our family engagement pieces, but also through, you know, some of the enrichment programs and things that we have in place to give them, you know, to know different kids outside their bubble. Here were the resource questions that we asked. An area of strength is our use of technology. And again, I think that speaks to our strategic plan and where we prioritize things as a district. We have great access to resources, we have good class sizes. I think that one of the reasons also that speaks to this success, not only is our district initiatives and support, but support from organizations such as the CBF. Deer Hill's a wonderful recipient of multiple CBF grants to support our technologies such as our full AV system in our cafeteria. Also, recent grant where we are redoing our STEM lab and our goal is to eventually continue that work in our learning comments. And so that technology has been really powerful. An area of growth in terms of resources. And this is the idea that staffing at Deer Hill supports all curricular areas and the individual needs of my child. And my takeaways from that and the school council is that idea that we want to maximize the expertise of our staff and that's also conversations I have with Barbara Sowanka about how we'll be using our support staff in ways that are really targeted and again, speak to differentiating student needs on all, across the whole spectrum of students. Also, and this is something that was in my current school improvement plan and you'll see reflected in my upcoming one, is that idea of how are we using our volunteers and what are ways we can leverage them as well to target that, that area. Communication and engagement. As you can see, there were a lot of points we wanted to gain feedback on. This is an important one. And in terms of area of strength, it was an tie in terms of how I, you know, I am, I do not claim to be a statistician by any stretch. And so really what I did was I, just so you know, in kind of identifying my strengths, I, I looked at, I just added up the strongly agree, the agree, and the neutral. Very fancy. And I was like, okay, I'll sit. And that's, that's what I did. And, and then, you know, then, and then I started, you know, doing the deeper dive into, oh, well, the strongly agree. You know, and it is actually quite interesting, but for purposes of this, that's what I looked at. And then I, then I also did a gut check. Does that resonate with what we're seeing? And, and it did, you know, amazing. So this was a tie in terms of the enrichment programs we offer and the opportunity for families to contribute to the school community. And again, I think that really reflects some things that we've put in place through current and past school improvement plans. Other areas of strength were that we are giving families more opportunities to learn about the curriculum and our responsiveness. So I think that was great. And in terms of the enrichment programs, that's gotten really robust during and in spite of and beyond COVID. Our reading rovers, we have yoga, and we're gonna have our first all-school yoga event out on the grass where families are welcome to join. It's just a real, as a cumulative, you know, kind of end-of-year celebration of that practice. Just lots of different things that we've done, our Holly Hill partnership, our enrichment programs with all teacher-driven. So that's, that's been great and that's something we want to continue as we go. When I think about our area of growth, I think that this one really targets one of the most important pieces of work we need to do. And I think also in, in full transparency, this was the, the pie chart that was, was, I think, our most, where the most constructive feedback came, where we have the most work to do. And that, and I think this is appropriate. And I know Dr. Scolins is nodding her head because this, we know, and the word we use today in a meeting we had about this is that it's, we're in a messy place right now. This is talking about, I understand how data and student work is used to assess my child's academic performance and to inform instruction. Again, I think it's that communication piece and letting families peek a little bit behind the curtain and then also letting them know when it's our, you know, our job is to synthesize and present and where that balance is and also how we build really concrete timelines and structures for that communication. And so I think, again, I think this is right on the money with where our work is as a school and the work we're doing on multiple district-led communities with Dr. Scolins. We had the progress report committee this morning. We've had recently the assessment committee. You know, there's lots of committees that are really working on that. And so just kind of looking at all of this data, there's this re, you know, the recurring themes that I saw across all of our questions were differentiation. Who, who are we working for, the students? And they are very different and what are their needs? The what is our curriculum and our assessment practices? What tools are we using and what next steps do we need to do? And our why is always going to be that engagement, getting children excited about learning and how we motivate them to succeed.
Great.
So that is the little background to that.
So we'll do the, we'll do the handbook next. You'll see from the handbook, there are minimal changes.
Yeah, just highlight the changes, I think. I don't think we need to go.
Oh, I'm not going through anything.
No.
Unless you really want.
That's all we're gonna do.
I think all the time I took on that, the handbook, on page 11.
We gotta make up for it.
Oh, sorry. On, oh, on the handbook, page 11, please don't drop your children off in front of school. Done. And page 18, we just highlighted that you can go to the school committee policy to find our wellness policy. Those are our changes.
And the drop-off, you're talking about vehicular drop-offs.
Well, all, yes. So we use the back loop for drop-off. And then interestingly, in last year's handbook, our current handbook, we specified at pickup that you couldn't pick up your children out front because that was a problem. But we never specified that you couldn't drop them off out front. It just somehow slipped through. And so the concern is that sometimes families will pull into a parking spot and then have their children walk across the crosswalk and that's a big no. And especially if they're trying to get to Ausgood, you know, and sometimes they'll just drop them off on the road and have them walk on the sidewalk. And so we just really want to drive home that when you're dropping your children off in the car, they have to come through the back loop.
The other problem with the pandemic was that the volume of cars was so high that it became almost at times safer if they dropped off. It was kind of a conundrum for us, but now we're in a different zone.
Right, and, and I'm not talking many, many families. This is not a huge concern. I'm actually really impressed with Deer Hill families and, and how responsive they are to expectations and things like that, but it just needed to be noted. I try in my newsletter, if I have to kind of do a little finger wag to point to the page in the handbook where they can find it so they, you know, it doesn't feel like new information. And at one point I needed to finger wag that. So.
It is now.
It is now, exactly.
So transition over to the improvement plan.
Right, and similar to the handbook, I, my plan is just to highlight changes. So looking at, so all the data is the same because we have, because we are getting back on cycle. This school improvement plan, our current school improvement plan was approved in December. And so the MCAS data that you see, the class size data, all of that is the same as to the current school improvement plan. Looking, there are three goals.
This is me, it's just the way we copied it.
Those are from before.
Yeah, those are from before.
This is not Principal Sullivan's, this is my.
Yes. So our first SMART goal is during the 2022-23 school year, Deer Hill School will develop and communicate a minimum of four practices that align curriculum, assessment, grading, and feedback with the new elementary progress report. That goal is unchanged. And the action plan item that I want to highlight as being a big shift speaks to what I spoke about in the survey. Develop an effective communication structure for orienting families to the assessment process and timeline at Deer Hill. So again, it's not only about what we share, but when we share it and making sure that families are, feel really comfortable with how information is being sold out to them in a similar and appropriate way. And so that's the, the big change in that goal. Other goals, or other action plan items continue to be ongoing. Goal number two, during the 2022-23 school year, Deer Hill will develop and implement a minimum of four practices that foster family and community engagement. This goal has two that are remaining in place. One is that I referenced in the survey is that idea of how we leverage our parent volunteers. I think again, we had a slower start getting folks back in the building and we focused more on the engagement in a different kind of way with concerts and those kinds of things. And now this is, we're, we're ready, we're excited for this. The other one is the Community Expert Day. That was in our past plan and we did make forward progress on that. I had a great meeting with the PSO where we really dialed down. We know what's going to happen in the fall, we know the model of what it's going to look like and now it's got wheels and we're excited to do that as well. It's something that we already do on smaller scales and in the classrooms invite experts in and they have it, especially third grade has it well organized. But also in fifth grade, we recently have the Doherty family in to do about, share about their bees. And so we do those kinds of things, but now it's gonna be a day, which is similar to something I've done in past districts. Our new initiatives or action plan items for this goal, this is like the really fun goal. Like all the really cool things we're gonna be doing at Deer Hill. We again, are streamlining and, and along with that idea of being really clear with families about what, what we're doing and kind of building on successes of things like our spelling bee that we just had or the upcoming fifth grade showcase is we want to be able to clearly articulate a curriculum-based project at each grade level where families will have an opportunity to come in and celebrate that. So again, and before the end of the school year, fifth grade families will be able to come in for a fifth grade showcase, which is a cross-curricular project that fifth grade students are currently working on. And we're gonna be able to point to something at each grade level and have an opportunity for families to come in and celebrate that. It might not be the same thing every year. Again, it's that shift between tradition and, you know, tying it to the curriculum, but there will be something at each grade level that a family can look forward to. We also are planning to organize a family math event to develop ways that families can support student learning and to foster that strong homeschool math connection. That ties directly to what I was sharing in our survey about giving families those resources and things because I, again, Bridges is very different from how families might have done math. And this is, hits a couple of buttons there with the engagement and also a better understanding of our curriculum. This last item came from a partnership we started this year with MassDOT. We had an assembly with them where they came out and did a little bike safety, pedestrian safety. And we, we want to go, the school council talked about this, we want to go a little bit rogue. We appreciate the resources from MassDOT and want to continue to talk to them, but we think we can bring it in-house and do some really cool things with the passive police department. We'd like to do a bike to school day where maybe you can bike from the music circus, you know, or, and have some police presence, a walk to school day, same thing, where we congregate and we all walk together. Kind of that walking school bus idea. And an area where we would maybe consider, continue to work with MassDOT is they will come and host a rodeo where the kids can learn, do like an obstacle course and things. They would, and that would be something we talked about, maybe help having some support from the PSO because that would likely be a weekend event.
No livestock.
No livestock, no, no, no rodeo, no, no.
A bicycle rodeo.
Yes, bicycle rodeo. That must have its own name sometime. So again, that was something, you know, and this is where it speaks to, again, having that representation on the school council. Mr. Umans, our PE teacher, has been a really great addition to our school council over the last few years. And he like brought this up, he's like, I've got this idea, I've got that idea. Can we really build on what we started with MassDOT? And so that was just a really great contribution on his part. Okay. Goal three, during the 2022-23 school year, Deer Hill School will promote an inclusive, socially-aware, and culturally-responsive school community through the implementation of at least four practices to include professional development, curriculum-building initiatives, and social-emotional supports. This one, our action plan actually did not change because everything on there is something that can, it, it can just continue to grow and evolve. And some really, some things that we did this year was we really had some great community service opportunities. It was our second year of using the May 4th, May the 4th be with you, to do a community service type event. Last year it was a food drive. This year it got really big with our partnership with End Hunger New England and we ended up with about 100 families that came down to Pembroke and we packaged food that went to Poland to support the Ukrainian refugees. Super hands-on for the kids. We had four-year-olds, you know, measuring rice. It was an amazing effort and it was really just, they had music playing. It was just, it was like, it was one of those like little teary moment kind of things. And so we're really excited about what are we gonna do next? How are we gonna, you know, whether we continue that partnership, what, we bring in something new? What are ways, and we're gonna do that? So those, all of those action items will remain the same as we continue that work of, of, you know, building our students' their best selves and their best selves in their community here and then their bigger community. There you go.
Thank you, Principal Sullivan. Any questions for Principal Sullivan regarding Deer Hill's school improvement plan or the handbook or the survey results? Mr. Carr?
So I think it's incredible. When I first moved to town, I was on the Deer Hill School Council under a different principle. Glad to come back, it's incredible. The challenges then are very different than the challenges you have now. And this is just, I love seeing metrics driven, you know, research and thoughts coming on. This is really incredible. You know, excellent work, I guess. I have one question, how many students do you count?
We're just over 300 right now. I think maybe 312 or 319.
Yeah, yeah. I, I jump up and down regularly around here when I, this is such critical information and I think 100 respondents is good, but any chance you get to get more people to respond?
Right, well, we did, one of the questions, we did have some demographic questions at the end and we did ask how many children you have. So when we have 100 respondents, you know, there's some that had, a lot of them, it was interesting. A lot of them were the onlys, where they were the only child in this, in the school, but we did have a few that had two children in the school, so that, that bumps our numbers a little bit. But yes, I agree.
Yeah. Excellent work.
And we gave out prizes. Candy bar if you do the survey.
That doesn't all under our wellness policy.
He's a friend.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Carr.
Yes, and apologies to Chair McColl and I have a few comments to go, so I might take a little time. But first, I agree with Mr. Carr that the survey is phenomenal. I love that we're engaging with families and getting engagement back. And actually, it sounds like 100 out of 300 or plus actually isn't, is not high, but it is pretty high. It's got some pretty good response rate for a, for a public survey like this. So, so good job to the council on that. What we saw there, I think if you picked out like the, the strengths and weaknesses and you showed the pie chart, everyone, is there any way you could share with the, with the committee the?
All the pie charts? 100%, I actually had.
Well, I was just gonna say, so I actually asked, Principal Sullivan did a little more with that, but you'll see from Principal Farrell, what I asked was just the highlights, but all of them can certainly share their surveys when you see these, you know, you just know that it's there. We were just trying to hit the.
And I did.
For this purpose, that's. For this purpose, that's perfect, I guess, you know, for diving in after. I mean, it's such valuable and rich data that I'd love to just see it and be able to kind of.
Absolutely.
Not manipulate it though.
Yeah, I know. I, yes, all the pie charts have been prepared, I just told the rest.
One of the themes that I saw coming through in a couple of different places is there was on the teaching and learning, there were 20% who did not agree. And then later on, there was another one where, where people are talking about differentiating learning. And I'll just use that as a, as a springboard for something I'm hearing from parents is that people are worried that for children who are, who are excelling, they're not getting the differentiated learning they're looking for. And so I know there might be an element of communication there, we mentioned that maybe that's communication. But I wouldn't discount that it's just communication. If they're, and, and, and let's look at ways where, and you talked about developing targeted learning. I do want to take that as, this is an opportunity to really focus on some of those targeted learning opportunities. How can we, how can we help, you know, the whole spectrum of students across the board?
I think that's great. And, and one of the things that we're already starting to think about next year is our math specialist and our reading specialist got together with Karen Johnston, who does a lot of our scheduling, is our assistant to the principal role. And they're looking at how we can align our literacy blocks for the same time across grade levels and our math blocks. Because then again, it allows for kind of cross pollination, for lack of a better word. Teachers can share students in different ways and again, you know, kind of target some of those different levels.
That's great. I want to specifically call out the enjoying coming to school. That is awesome. I mean, that, if there's one metric of this whole thing that's important, it's that one, we need to have the kids who want to come to school. The other one that, that is, I agree with you, we want to work on is the, the peers survey. 10% doesn't sound like a lot, but if there's one on every team kids who is not, you know, geared up about their peer relationships, I agree. Lot to do with, lot to do with pandemic, lot to do with what's happened. But let's not lose sight of that. That's something that, that I think we should just keep on our, our radar, our screen before.
Yes.
And, you know, you guys do, I mean, just the graduation is such a good example, that's such a good class. All, I mean, this is a great school, great group of kids. So I know you guys do a great job developing those peer relationships. So, you know, just want to keep that on the radar. Another one of the survey results, certainly, from me. Data, our parents, we live in different times now and our parents are thirsty for data and information. And I know, because I work with you guys, the difficulty in taking raw data and turning it into something that is not going to be misleading to parents.
Right.
And that creates a tension where then parents think, we are hiding stuff from you. It's like, no, we don't even understand how parse this and what we can learn from it yet. So it's good to see that, I mean, I was kind of expecting that response. And so it's good to see that we're, we're paying attention to that as well. Lastly, another great point from the survey that you almost immediately addressed in the plan. One of the things that was on there, I think was one of the second things is finding ways to celebrate learning and accomplishment. And then I noted on your, on your plan, you've got an event to celebrate learning accomplishment. So this is, this is, this is fantastic. So good, good stuff on the, on the survey. Moving to the handbook. Really quick. Page 17, there's some years that will be updated from 2021 to 2022. And I also wanted to specifically thank, on behalf of myself and my family and for all the families who.
More snacks?
Of the expansion of the snack menu, specifically the inclusion of Goldfish crackers as an option.
I can't take credit, that's all the nurses.
So, but just as, you know, I'll, I'll mention as principals and to, to Principal Sullivan. The more we can expand that, the better, because there are some children at home, maybe in the dial residence who are somewhat picky. So, you know, the more we can buy and save snacks that be there, I think that'd be appreciated.
And a few of those, Wes.
Yeah, so, so thank you for that. And then on the plan. You noted that the MCAS data was, was from spring 2021.
Yes.
Will we get a version of this with the updated 2022 data?
It doesn't come out, it won't.
It's next, next October, because I remember we saw this last year, it was like, was this in last year's version? Would we do, we do that one later?
So remember, because of the strategic plan, this is our first year of strategic plan, we did our, our handbooks and.
Later. That's right.
This is the normal time.
Yes.
So now we're back on cycle, so it's almost like you got it early.
Right.
And this is typically when you get it. So a year from now, I'll be sharing with you the spring data, but Dr. Scott will be doing.
I'll do that in the fall anyway.
Yeah.
Great. So, but it did give me the PTSD about our, our math scores, seeing them again. I'm like, oh, the math! And I didn't see anything here, and I know we talked about it last time, but I didn't see anything specifically on the strategic plan and the SMART goals relating to math developments. I know we've got new math, math specials coming in. But there's a math event, but I mean, I guess, you know, to really, I mean, math, one math event is really, I don't know if that's going to do it. Like is there, does this reflect a real?
Well, district-wide, though, because it's, we're implementing our math program. So it's, it's all part of the implementation, implementation process. So you're, you're going to watch the scores go up because we were in pandemic. And we only, working with Bridges and the Math Center, they had us target the specific areas that they wanted to make sure that we hit kind of our power standards, knowing full well that we weren't going to be able to get to all the curriculum. We wanted to make sure that we got deep where we had to, and so it's reflected in those scores, for sure.
Yeah.
But I guess, you know, I just want to make sure there's, there's something on it because it's not specifically in the plan, other than the math event. The family math event. But are there things we're doing to utilize?
Last year's school improvement plan, if I had, well, last year's spoke to Bridges as being part of it. It's almost like, you know, as we kind of develop our action plan, we don't let go of the things that we've already kind of brought into the fold. And so now our commitment to math is, is pretty cemented. And so that's just part of our ongoing work that we do. I also just want to say, coming into next year, it'll be our year three.
Right.
And I think curriculum is a lot like growing a shrub, it's like sleep, creep, leap. And so in your third year, as a teacher working with a program, you really hit your stride. And not only will they be hitting their stride with a program, but no one will have a mask on their face and all of the kids will be in front of them. So they'll have the opportunity to really knock it out of the park with kids who already have established foundations with this math program.
And technically, this was our actual first year.
Right.
Right. Implementation, because our first year was inter学期. And then last year, we had the hybrid piece going on.
Actually, last year was our first year.
No.
So.
This is year two. This is just the never. Yeah, this is year two Bridges. So we.
Seems like two separate years.
Yes.
It really does, I'm being serious.
No, this is year three.
Of implementation?
I think it is, only because.
Because when we were out on like March 20th and thing, teachers were scrambling to create like math curriculum.
There's no way this is year three, because, because I would have been.
Because of the pandemic and because of the way it broke.
Oh, yeah.
I also should mention that we, you know, our strategic plan is, is, is just that. It's strategically, we, we look at data over the summer and we make adjustments to the plan and focus points come out of that. So the, the strategic plan you set, and that's one of the reasons we did a three-year plan, because it's almost impossible to, to have a three-year plan accurately guided from the beginning, never mind a five-year plan. So we do look at things and we do emphasize them based on data.
And for my first two years, we had the win math goal and we, so we've had, you know, math has been, so it's kind of like.
Yeah, I know it's been in flux and that other.
No, but I mean, we've cycled kind of through some math school improvement plan goals and kind of now we're, you know, we're, we're shifting into our TLA. It kind of goes like this, but it doesn't go away. So just because it's not here, if you were to go through my past school improvement plans, then you would see that thread in it. You just never drop it, you just add to it.
So that, that's helpful, I just want to make sure.
No, when you look at this as a snapshot, I'll hunt, I see exactly where that perspective is and that's important.
So, otherwise, I think that, that does it for me. Thank you, this is a lot of work and you did a great job putting it all together and setting it forth.
Great counsel, look.
Take us down, Mr. Terry.
Great job. I, I just, this, this is more of a comment than anything else, you know, we, we, I, I feel like everything from like Deer Hill in Osgood is like, la, la, like we're all in like, you know, and then you get up to the middle school and you can't get parents to, to give you an hour of their time, five minutes of their time. What do you think the disconnect there is? Because you go to a PSO meeting in your school and there's 50 people. You go to a middle school, you can't get five. What, I mean, this is a serious issue in the town. Like, do we all think that we're done at fifth grade, Mr. Sullivan is going to give a graduation and that's over? Like, what do you think that, do you think it's the parents feel like they don't want to, they're not invited into the school?
Well, I think, I mean, they don't want to hold off too much. We do have Principal Mills coming.
No, I, no, what I'm trying to say is, now that we have Mr. Sullivan here.
Yes.
Is there, is there, is there any way that we could work together? I know you do, especially this year, that we did have an actual orientation. This is going to be the sixth grade class, we didn't have that in the last couple of years. However, my, I was actually pretty shocked when I got to the middle school as, as a parent. Because I, first of all, it wasn't even a middle school, it was a middle high school. It was crazy. But, you know, I'm just, I'm, I just, I watched the middle school, it just seems like everybody thinks it's over and it's not. It's when the kids need you the most, six, seven, and eight. And these parents need to get involved. I mean, you have 100 people doing a survey, that's fantastic. Type a job, you probably get 20. I mean, you know.
Tell us how many he got.
We will, but, you know, and this is, this isn't, this is more of a statement to the community, you know, what I see. And if it matters to anybody. I just think that if you had a kid in the middle high school and you got a kid in the, in the high school, get involved! Just do something, ask the teachers, the principals, what do you need? Because I just think that you got it all there at the Osgood and the Deer Hill, I see all these people. And then in middle school, I, I, I just tell you, my wife serves as, as a PSO and she, I feel like she's by herself. And it's really not fair. So if you want to get involved with your kid's education, I, I, you know, we got it in the elementary school, you guys are great. I mean, this is, this is fantastic. The middle and the high school, I mean, it's just, there is no help there. And, and if you're a parent out there, it, it's time to get involved. That's my message. I'm sorry. And I will mention it to Mr. Mills, but I would just like you guys to be aware of that. Try to educate the parents that it's not over here at Deer Hill. This is great, this is fun, this is great, but sixth grade is where it starts. You know, this is where, you know, this is where you, you, you go through puberty, you go through some really hard times, six, seven, and eight. And you need to be there for your kids. And you should probably be there more in those ages as opposed to elementary. That's just my two cents.
Thank you.
Thanks, Terry. Just saying.
A pleasure to be a part of this process with you.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure to have you.
No questions.
Okay. Principal Sullivan. My first point is, I noticed that compass point three, the more, the, the most elusive compass point is not reflected anywhere in the SMART goals. So it's like the one compass point that's not addressed by the SMART goals. It's not necessarily the worst thing in the world because we see different, several different plans that, that struggle to incorporate that goal. So.
Can you remind our viewers what compass point three is?
So just putting it out there, so for like the next one, do you think, that's all? And then.
Doesn't mean we're not addressing it as a district at Deer Hill.
Right.
It's not in the.
It's actionable and so I, I would love like feedback and support on how, you know, I, I think that sometimes that's something that's, that comes in a different.
Well, for example, you're going to see a lot of safety resources based on, you know, some of the things we, we, we're going to try to add to some of our existing systems. Like, there's a lot that, that we're doing.
Right.
But you're right.
It could be utilizing a certain space for a certain social emotional purpose or something for students, something that you could just, that, that's, that's, I mean, you'd be able to think of reason, of ways to do it better than I can. I don't think this is something, I, I don't cite it to, to say that, you know, well, you know, we shouldn't approve this as is. I'm just saying, I mean, you run a very strong school. I'm just saying that the, the point of the strategic plan obviously is to have that all comes points trickle down in some manner from district plan, the building plan. You know, all from the, from the school committee. So just throwing it out there, just so you're aware.
That's good, right?
That's great feedback.
And then, I, I, I don't, so what's the value of incorporating that MCAS report? I think it makes sense to incorporate that in the school improvement plans. Over, like in general, that particular score set is, is very misleading. I mean, it's like, I mean, think about when that's like reporting, what work that's reporting. It's, it's, I don't know that there's any compelling value to that. And I feel like it's, it's detrimental almost to put it in there because I think it paints an erroneous picture of, of what's going on in the school. So I, I don't, I mean, I don't know if we're like, are we required? Okay, and that's answer.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like the enrollment, like there's, those all have to be.
But it's a data point that we, we don't ignore. And I, I'm not saying you do, but I know what you're saying exactly.
Yes, 100%.
But we do want to dive into that and, and it is, you know, there, there are some, some flags raised.
A very skewed set of data there.
But you still have to know.
So many variables.
Right, right, but we still, it's still data. And it's compiled with so many other data points that's really telling if, when you look at individuals, it's very helpful in some cases.
No, but I think to your point, we don't, I, I think one of your concerns is you don't want it to send a message that we look at our MCAS scores and then we develop the school improvement plan. And that's not what's happening. And it was interesting, I did have a, a parent meeting recently where that perspective, which I never in my entire career had someone think that I put an overemphasis on standardized test scores. I was like, wow, that's not typically what I'm known for. So I think that, yes, I hear what you're saying, but unfortunately, I think we're required.
It's a prime, it's a thing, it paints.
Can we make it a smaller font?
Maybe you can put an asterisk there, I'm serious. I mean, I, it's, it's just, it, it gives like from a, from a layperson's perspective, you look at that and you're like, okay, kind of like, totally know the overall strength of the school. And you're like, what's going on here? It's like, well, like, there was a lot going on when those tests were, those results were poured on something that was, it was a crazy time. It's not reflective of the teaching and learning that's happening in the school. So I just think it's misleading, but we have to put it in there. So great, we'll move on because we got to keep the strain rolling. Principal Sullivan, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
And I think we've also, Principal Farrell, I'll let you up, please. But I think we've, I think we've covered a lot of, a lot of stuff that also applies to Osgood as well in some of our discussions, so.
So thank you for being here, Principal Farrell, and congratulations, Principal Farrell. We, we, I'm very happy to say we've renewed our contract for.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, everything's good on with you.
So I will. The family survey results. So, Principal Farrell, take it away.
Good evening and thank you for inviting us this evening. My survey is going to look a little different, but have some similarities to Principal Sullivan's survey. The background of the survey was, it's 2021-22 Osgood School Council Survey. I would like to just interject and thank my school council. So for the parents, we have Lauren Grogan as a parent representative, Jenna Deval as a parent representative, Andrew Moulton as a parent representative, Mr. McClellan is our school committee liaison.
Worst one ever, though, I missed a lot of meetings here.
And we have Dave Bitten as a staff representative, Jen McPhillips as a staff representative, and Felicia Frank as a staff representative. Way too much going on here, all right. I'm sorry. It's okay.
So this is the time we start to relax.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't.
Okay, so.
You guys got to give me a break.
I know.
Thank you for hydrating everyone.
So we developed the questions in March and April. Our data collection was from April and May, right after April vacation to the beginning of May. And participation, I was very pleased that we had 170 families participated, so I'm going to say 1%.
Is that more, just real quickly, is that, you had 100, you had 100?
Yeah, that's great.
You have more grades in your.
No.
So it's the same amount, 300?
We did pre-k, well, actually, we had pre-k.
Looking at 51%, I would say mine was closer to like maybe 33 or 35.
So to my point earlier, it seems like participation goes.
These are our, some of our students, there are various events that we had to share. I really like to make sure that I am having a picture of the faces of who we're talking about in front of us. Some of them give a lot of expression in their pictures, but the next part that I wanted to go over was the survey itself and the questions. So the first part of the survey, just variety of questions that were asked were all based on how do you feel? We're the Osgood, there's not much to say other than we're touchy-feely. We want, we're the entrance into the cohesive public schools. So if you're feeling comfortable, as you had mentioned before, if you're feeling comfortable coming in to the earlier buildings, then hopefully you'll continue that. And so the question was, am I satisfied with the experience when I visit the Osgood? And that is for the families and as you can see, the results are right there. Really wanted to make sure that families are comfortable when they come in because there are a lot of families, a lot of members of families that they didn't have a great experience in school. Maybe they didn't have a great experience in elementary school, maybe as they left high school. And if you don't have a great experience someplace, you're not willing. If you don't have a great experience someplace, you're not willing to put yourself out there and come right back in. We want to change that. We want people to feel welcome into the school. So the next question, and I did at the end kind of give percentages, so we could just, the next question is, um, you could change the slide for me?
Oh, I think I did.
Did you? Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I'm, I'm satisfied with the opportunities that are presented to be involved at the Osgood. Again, looking at, are we offering enough opportunities for parents to be welcome into the Osgood, feel comfortable in the Osgood? And are they, as to Mr. McClellan's point, since I first met him, are they day and evening opportunities? Does it happen so that everybody can get the opportunity to come into the Osgood? The next question.
And just so that the, the scale is, um, strongly disagree, disagree, neutral, agree, and strongly agree?
Yes, absolutely.
So five is strongly agree and a four is an agree.
Good thing it wasn't the other way around.
Well, yeah.
And at the end, you'll see I put, um, I highlighted, uh, specific spots and gave the percentages there, which they fell into a category. Social emotional learning, I'm satisfied with how the Osgood is preparing my child socially and emotionally. Um, I would have liked to see the numbers towards the end a little higher, um, just in reflecting about a lot of the survey. I'm not quite sure if that is pandemic related or not, uh, because again, we have the youngest students. A lot of our, um, kindergarten students had a lot of social emotional things to work through this year, just because they've been home for so long.
You had some qualitative information in this too that provides you with some, it kind of breaks it down.
Yes, yes. Um, so that was an area that I, I definitely, I don't want to blame it on any specific event that's happened, but it is really important to know that parents are kind of looking if their children are socially emotionally able to stop learning, making themselves available. The next one, my student feels a sense of belonging within the Osgood community, much to your point, Mr. Kearney. Um, where do we have this sense of belonging? It is, it's the children have a sense of community, the parents have a sense of community. And that's really important to look at. We had, um, the number of people that felt their student feels like they belong to the community, I think was high, but I think we need to get that just a little bit higher, particularly in second grade. Because I think when they start in kindergarten, they have that awareness of this is my school. First grade, it's, I, I'm now getting to know it a little bit better. Huge difference between a K through five building and a pre-K through two building. You don't, you're not there as long, so you don't feel that sense of community. But it doesn't mean that we can't hit it out of the pocket. We talk about students feeling belonged. Uh, family engagement, I feel a strong, uh, I feel a sense of belonging in the Osgood community. One of the things that, um, one of the takeaways I had after looking at all the results for, are people engaged? There's a difference between dropping your child off and getting communication and are you engaged in what's going on?
Right.
And to Principal, um, Sullivan, and I'm talking to Dr. Skarland's, maybe the engagement part can be about how the, how the children are learning. An evening, a math event, uh, uh, curriculum night, we were talking about how that engagement to me is what I think is lacking a little bit.
That's great.
The communication, okay, so this is where I had to walk away, um, the communication aspect. I, for people that have done surveys and it's a reflection, you're reflecting on what people are saying. So you need to take what they're saying, walk away and think, okay, this makes sense. If you reflect on it too quickly, there's a lot of emotions that go on. So I will tell you that when it came to communication, I walked away, I reflected, and absolutely without a doubt, people are spot on when it comes to communication. I asked how they felt about the communication from the district. Strong communication from the district. People were really happy about that. Um, they appreciated the information that they were getting. The next part of communication was school. I feel satisfied with the communication from the Osgood, um, office staff, being myself, the office, special education, and, um, oh, again, myself. This is the one that I had to walk away from and think about for a little bit because I didn't feel it was as strong as it should be. You, we, our numbers for highly, um, a lot of happiness should be higher in that area. And I needed to think about why is that happening? Particularly when you go on to the next slide and you see communication from the teachers is still kind of in that area, which to be very honest with you, thinking about the Osgood, I think we tell you everything we're doing all the time at every turn in the classrooms. But just because I have the perspective of knowing what's going on, and then if somebody puts something out there, I might say, wow, we're really communicating. I had to take myself back and think about what about the people who aren't maybe not as involved or they're getting their information, not necessarily from their child, but the teacher, the district seemed to be just fine, or what are they getting from me? So, um, once I had my, my moment of talking to the school council, we worked through it, we went through, what are we going to do? So if we look at the results, um, I'm satisfied with my experiences when I've been to the Osgood, ninety-three percent. The Osgood is preparing my child socially, emotionally, ninety-three percent. My students feel a sense of belonging, ninety-eight percent. And I'm satisfied with the school communication, eighty-seven percent. I went to Catholic elementary school and an eighty-seven would not be acceptable. It's not about grades, but that would, that's the one that I kind of, and it's the one that I feel I have some control over. So continuing, um, to move forward, school communication is a focus point. And I had talked to, um, Dr. Skarland's and Dr. Sullivan about this when I first got the response, the responses back in May. And a couple of the things that we had talked about is how can I make sure that I am getting communication out to parents? So if any of you are parents at the Osgood right now, the only way that I'm not communicating, um, hopefully successfully, is through air skyrocketing with a plane. I have asked parents to join a blooms. The entire school is invited to do, join a blooms account. So what that means to anybody that's not aware of blooms, it's like Facebook, but just for the school. Nobody else is in it, nobody else. Um, parents don't communicate with me. I just push out information. Like for example, today was Celtics Friday. Pushed it out a couple of days ago, Celtics Friday. Every single morning, part of the morning ritual, I've been feeding the dog, is to put a blooms out, whether the blooms is saying, this is what we're doing, this is what we should be doing, this is what you can look forward to. That was number one. Number two, uh, kudos to Jen McPhillips, who is on my school council, said, hey, Lisa, I do a audio bloom. So an audio boom, believe it or not, and my children can't believe this, is a podcast. So I am now podcasting once a week, um, which may get me out of the family, but podcasting just, this is what happened, this is what happened this week, this is what's happening next week. Tying that podcast and the blooms into the once a month newsletter is where I'm working right now. Because the once a month newsletter, I think people, if anybody is like me, I'll look at something and say, oh, wow, I got to get to that, or I better get to it later. Audio bloom, you get it once, once a week, you hear my voice and you don't have to read anything, it's just telling you, ticking off things. That is then connected to the bloom, which will say, don't forget tomorrow, we're doing X, Y, and Z. So using the survey, and again, my survey's a little bit more on the social emotional side, um, and I think that goes along with the age of the students we have.
And you were also thinking about doing the hub for.
Yes, we're going to pull that all together so the parents can look in several different spots to get all the ideas. And it's, um, actually working with Cassie O'Brien, she's putting it on the web, um, our webpage right now, my audio blooms there and all of that. So.
And all she, all the principals doing needs to know, and Principal Sullivan has a, has a hub that she uses for staff. Um, and I think it's a great idea to use for parents too. So in other words, you're always directed there if you want to see past newsletters, information, it's great.
So to just wrap up the survey, the common threads of things that we need to work on and continue moving forward with would be the parent communication. Making sure that the parents are involved into what is the involvement. Involvement doesn't necessarily mean just reading the newsletter. It means, am I making myself, are we making the Osgood available to everyone that wants to participate? I mean, the kindergarten, um, orientation the other evening, I was so excited to see a hundred parents there. I thought that was extremely strong. Looking at the parents, when we talked about PSO and volunteering, I'd said to them, I was not that parent that could volunteer because I was working during the day and evenings were a time that I started with the children. So what I like to do and what the teachers are starting to do at the Osgood is send homework for the parents. So if I need specifically for our math program, we do a lot of cutting, a lot of cutting, a lot of putting together. So a packet goes home to a parent, says, if you don't mind tonight, could you cut all these out? That's parent involvement. It doesn't mean your face, your case, or your feet have to be in the building. It's just helping out. So I'm not quite sure, do you want me to continue going on from the handbook and then all questions or?
Well, do the handbook and the school improvement plan.
All right, I was paying attention before.
Yeah, the handbook is, really, there are, there are really no changes except.
For the handbook, it was the only updates or changes was on page nine through fourteen, updated staff for what we have right now. Added hyperlinks for the wellness policy and for harassment on page twenty-eight. Made minor language changes, which will again change more for, um, around attendance, which is on page sixteen. Sorry, Dr. Sullivan. I'm.
No, it's okay. I'm just, I'm not going to stop. I'll just go through some.
And the other one was the added district calendar link.
Go to your school improvement plan.
And school improvement plan. So as has been mentioned before, the school improvement plan is a work in progress. It's growing with us. And we did, um, when we were working with the school improvement plan, a few of the things that we wanted to really look at more were tied back into our survey. So as we look at the first goal, um, sorry, the first piece of our goals, the SMART goal, we kept all of that. The, the Osgood will continue to increase student learning in math and literacy. The increase will direct the result from professional development offered in literacy and continued math development. And Dr. Skarland, because we were going back and forth, it is the third year, um, I'll change that.
No, it's here too. No, I was wrong. It's the pilot. Maybe you know what pilot?
Okay, so I was okay. I was here too. Okay.
So I think I lost the euro.
Yeah.
You know what? Yeah, I apologize.
I just go by my pile and, um, home workbooks. So I know we're on the second work.
Nobody was wrong.
There we go.
Right. So looking at this goal here, we're going to continue with the TLA and working with the literacy, but through our very, very helpful math specialist, we have a lot of PD that's going on within the building for math. Um, Asha Campell gets a huge chair because she's always working with each of the individual teachers and the grade levels to say, okay, this is where we are. Doesn't fit this year, we need to fix this. So it's, um, she keeps us rolling in the math. The, the next goal. Next SMART goal, during the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school year, the Osgood will continue to implement responsive classroom. We're going to continue as we should implementing responsive classroom for two reasons. One is it's a very, um, well-appreciated program from, by the staff. They feel very comfortable with that. The students get to learn a lot of different areas, uh, when it comes to social emotional. And we have new staff coming in all the time. So I think that's one goal that just has to continuously be brought up. And how is that working throughout the school? One of the areas that I did, um, add in was the zone of regulations. Speaking to the kindergarten parents, incoming kindergarten parents, um, on Monday evening is, I would like to, and you'll see on the action plan, I want to plan and host evenings for families to learn about zones. Um, we have a lot of edu-babble that we do in schools, and I think by the time maybe they get to Deer Hill, they understand what it means for differentiated instruction. They understand what it means responsive classroom. But I think in the younger grades, we use a lot of terminology that unfortunately, it's almost like a child enters another country when they get into school, they learn a different language and they have to go home and try and educate, a five-year-old educating their parent on what the blue zone is. Um, it's a little difficult. But we do use zones all the time in school. Between the zones and the other thing that I wanted to make sure that we work on the strategic plan is size of problems. I don't know many adults that can handle, um, stopping a situation and realizing this really isn't a big problem, it's a small problem, we can handle this. The size of problem is something that we work on in every single classroom and with our adjustment counselors. That's important, I think, for parents to also understand at home. What does that mean? When a child comes home and says, I was pushed on the playground, um, a friend didn't like me. We need to learn to use that same language at home. That was a small problem. How can we fix that problem? As opposed to that was a huge problem, now what are we going to do? So I do want to have, host more evenings, um, whether it be on Zoom, whether it be taped, just parents learning about all of these social emotional pieces. And the last piece for goal three. Um, our goal this year was to get more, um, community engagement. Super proud of the high school for coming out, working with us all the time. They were here for the holidays, they're coming out for the diversity fair for both the Deer Hill and the Osgood. We have Ms. Humphrey coming out this week with her statistics, students to help us out. So I'm really happy about that. I just want to keep that going and then maybe move it down to the middle school. The biggest part is if you look under the action plan, the Osgood Senate, um, in Os, Faculty Senate, Osgood School Committee, Social Committee, will work together to build opportunities for students, families, and staff to include more planned community involvement. Those three groups are the three groups that helped me run the school. Your Faculty Senate is represented from each grade level, telling you what the yeas and the nays are of the school. Your, our, our Osgood Social Committee reminds us that February is a very long month, we could have fun in February, um, staff and students. And then our, um, the other committees with the parents and the teachers, learning about what is important in an early elementary school, or what we want to focus on. Um, that being said, learning what we can focus on for Celtics Day, that was also brought out in the, um, survey, that there needs to be some lead time. I can't just drop on parents, tomorrow's Celtics Day, wear something green. So it all kind of blends in together. It's a great idea to have a Celtics Day, but there has to be communication. I, the thing I walk away with is communication, communication, communication. I think I hit everything.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Principal Farrell. I was nervous for you. Thank you, Principal Farrell. Are there any questions for Principal Farrell, uh, related to, uh, the survey results, the school improvement plan, or the handbook as she just presented, Mr. Carr?
Do you, or the Bloom technology, do you have backend analytics? How many of the families look at that?
Yes, I do. Look at it every morning, who's listening to me? Who's listening to me? So right now, so for three hundred and forty-two families that are in the school, I have a hundred and ninety-five families that have signed up right now in the last three weeks.
And are they reading? Can you tell if they're?
I can, yes.
That's great.
So I'm hoping that next year, because I just implemented it now, I'm hoping next year it'll be, almost everybody will be on that.
That's a great turnout just for the first round.
Yeah, I'm pretty impressed.
That's actually great information to share newsletters too. To try to continue like we have this, to show people, that's a, it's a great tool and a great suggestion about the analytics.
Yeah, it works out really nicely. They have the code, we have the code that we can send them. But as it is right now, I sent the code out to everybody. Now what I have is in the handbook, I'm sorry, in the newsletter. If you'd like to join, please ask the code. Because if I put the code out into.
Like the world.
The world, then I've, I got people listening to me, but they shouldn't be listening to me.
Good for you. That's great. Well done.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Mr. Dial.
Principal Farrell, these are tremendous survey results. You should be proud. And I know you hold yourself to a very high standard being a Catholic elementary school. But where I come from, eighty-seven percent is pretty good. So eighty-seven percent on communication, and that's, that's a theme we're seeing across these. I will say as a parent of a student in Osgood and a former student in Osgood, I'm well within that eighty-seven percent who thinks your communication is excellent. As for the thirteen percent, some of the improvements, you know, you're making a lot of strides in different channels and different frequencies and whatnot in communication. One thing that I think might actually be informing that eighteen, that thirteen percent, you hit on it at the very end. It's not necessarily that people don't find you're accessible or they can't, they don't know what's going on. But the, when I've heard complaints, it's been more about like Celtics Day. We didn't know about Celtics Day. And so it's not so much the communication, but just giving the parents the lead time. And when people react to that and it's, oh yeah, they didn't know about Celtics Day or the day before, communication. And, you know. So it may not be that people think that the school's not accessible. It may not be the communication. Maybe that, you may not need to do more communication, just more timely communication, more lead time, more planning. But I think, and as I was reflecting on both the surveys and, and on the communication, I can't think of another organization that communicates with its stakeholders more than this district. I mean, your newsletter goes out, we've got, you know, your communications. I get emails from teachers. You guys do a fantastic job of getting people involved. And so I know their survey results, I know people, they're individuals, but I don't want to lose sight of the fact that you guys do a great job of reaching out to people, meeting people where they are and through all various other channels. We've been a podcast now.
I have.
That's groundbreaking for our leadership team.
What's groundbreaking for me?
So, so that's great on the survey. On the handbook, I have the same comment for you I had for Ms. Sullivan. Snacks are great and page twenty-one does need some years updated from the prior year. So that's, that's the handbook. Otherwise, it was good last year. It's good this year. On the improvement plan, I like this idea of, of helping kindergarten parents understand the zones. Because I can tell you that when I learned zones, it was from a kindergartner. And I learned about the brown zone and the silver zone and the gold zone, none of which actually exist.
Yeah, I was just gonna say those aren't.
Those aren't zones. But they, but you know, as, as, as interactive kindergarten makes up its own zones. And I will also say that it's effective. My, my, my younger son, I remember he had a, had an issue and I heard him, not quite muttering. It wasn't creepy muttering, but he was saying, this is not a big problem. This is a small problem. And so you're, the work that you're doing on this is, is having impact. So I, I keep, keep that up. I love responsive classroom. I think that's, that's a, that sets foundational stuff. So that's it. I don't have any, any specific comments on them too.
So you would be in the green zone?
I'm in the green. I'm in the green zone. I mean, it's slightly sleepy.
I was just gonna say, my time, I finished it all.
I was gonna say.
Be good wish. Let's move on, Mr. Dial.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carey?
Yes, well, I just want to comment that Principal Farrell, Principal Sullivan, you guys really communicate well between years because you really feel like it's one school. It's between, you know, there is such a benefit of having two schools. But like you said, the experience, second grade is the big man on campus and the fifth grade. So, and you guys have done so well and I'd like to see the basketball tournament come back. That was one of the most exciting things I could ever tell you. So I'm.
Give a friendly spin on it.
Yeah.
It was a lot of, it was getting cut off.
It was, it was. And then they had cards with the teachers' names on there. Cards. It was, you know, and the collaboration between you two principals is commendable. The only thing that I ever see that I admit that, that I, that I always say, I wish we did a better job is, is the cafeterias themselves. Sitting at square tables is, is, is not good for kids. Kids should be sitting in round tables. It's more sociable for kids to look at, like we're all in round tables. We were in a square table, you, you kind of want prisoners in square tables because you don't want them communicating. That's what it does. But in our areas, in those two cafeterias, I just think it's a, it's a learning opportunity. It should be a learning center where kids are learning that if I'm teaching kids their broccoli are good, you should be teaching.
I disagree with that.
You know, it's, 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 it's almost a, and I, you know, I can attribute, you know, my kids eat organically and their grades show it. And, and I think that, you know, we're losing in that elementary level, how important it is. And it's not just, oh, give the kid this and child that. It's, it's the dyes and the sugars that really, you know, mess the kids up. Like we don't look at it as a big thing. It really is for a little child to be given aspartame or too much sugar and then they can't sit in the classroom. So I just think those cafeterias themselves should be learning centers where, again, when you go into that cafeteria line, you're learning what you're eating, you're learning where it's coming from. You're educating them on where plants are made from and the nutrients and, because it's just not like gardens and why is it tomato? There's nutrients and vitamins in there that fight diseases. And you need to teach those kids. So.
That'd be great on the, I'm sorry, do you need to interrupt?
No.
My mind is just about to shut down. That would be great on the TVs that we have that Melon put in there.
Yes, that was, that was one of the ideas. And then like you said, and, and, and if it's painting the room so that they're more of a dining room experience. Because like, we did do a walkthrough with, with the food services a couple of years ago and I was horrified.
So, Mr. Carey, you and I, hopefully the committee will agree when we give the school committee, subcommittees next time. I, I want to form a food nutrition subcommittee. This is exactly at that level what we'll start to do. And then hopefully we can start seeing that sort of things in the school improvement plan, which would be an example of a compass point number three issue, right? So.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, like, we're going to be all over that this year.
And that's the type of revitalization with the furnishings and the atmosphere in there. And particularly Osgood, I mean, the room is beautiful. It's got, you know.
Naturally.
Yeah, and it's, it's just the furniture, I think, could use some.
The furniture got real, the furniture got manipulated when it was in those trailers.
Correct.
So we do need to order new tables. So maybe we go off the gun again.
It's a conversation.
Yes.
It's a conversation. One of many improvements that have taken place here.
I'm excited. And again, I want to reiterate how it's a good job you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carey. Ms. St. Arch.
Thank you. It's Professor Farrell. I love hearing these. I, it just makes me a little bit sad that in my last weeks as an Osgood parent, but I'm loving your blooms.
Okay, thank you.
And I love that you're meeting not just kids, but parents where they are, sending home ways to be involved. It's just such a nice way to extend that. And I think for everyone here who is a working parent, who would probably happily be in the classroom if they could be, it's just nice to be given opportunities, ways to feel like you are hands-on involved. So it's great. And, and I think beyond, you know, we have a very exciting professional sports, you know, situation here. But I really appreciate the lead time and like pollinator day is things that are curriculum-based and not just athletics-based. So that I think is more important and we have the lead time. Communication is great on that.
Well, pollinator day is not easy to find clothes for.
Oh, well, you know, again, we have butterfly wings at the wazoo.
Well, actually, you can just walk outside. You get a.
But thank you for everything. This looks great.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Principal Farrell. I, the same criticism, constructive criticism or feedback that I had for Principal Sullivan is that compass point three isn't represented in our goals. Again, that's, and it's not surprising because it is the most elusive of all of them in formulating those things. But, but aside from that, I mean, you know, I just, survey results aren't surprising. I mean, you're, you're interfacing with the parents. I can speak as a, as a prior Osgood parent and a current Osgood parent. I mean, they're, they're great. I mean, you know, and whenever I'm meeting with you, your phone's ringing off the hook with, with, you know, very nervous, early elementary parents and you do a great job with that. So thank you for everything you do and thank you, Principal Sullivan, for everything you do. We're lucky to have both of you in charge of our elementary schools.
Thank you for a lovely evening.
Thank you. Have a very good evening. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Can I make a motion to approve the handbook?
Oh, we got a vote.
With the parents of Osgood.
We got to approve both of them, yeah. So let's do it individually though. So is there a motion to approve the Dear Hill School Improvement Plan as presented by, by Principal Sullivan?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dial. All in favor, aye. Opposed. Motion as you passes. School Improvement Plan for Dear Hill is approved. I don't think we need to approve the handbook, do we?
Should.
Well, there's some changes.
Well, let's do it. Is there a motion to approve the handbook for Dear Hill School as presented by Principal Sullivan?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Carey is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dial. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion as you passes. Let's do both the handbook and the school improvement plan for Osgood. Is there a motion to approve both those as just as we, the previous presented by Principal Farrell?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Dial, seconded by Mr. Carr. Is it a second? Okay, all in favor, aye. All opposed. So both of those documents are approved by unanimous vote. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I just have to say one thing before we go. I feel like I am in confession. So yesterday I sent out an email that today was Celtics Pride Day. So I just didn't want. I'm like kidding you, like.
You can't help it. And I think it's got more significance.
Do you guys want to re-vote? Do you want to re-vote?
Google, it's the next Celtics Day. And then I was like, oh, it's tomorrow. You know, and so I just didn't want Lisa to be alone and, and that, because I just needed to make that. Thank you.
I'm just focused on the fact that my kids are wearing clothes.
And I forgot to bring on top of that.
And I wait for Principal Farrell. They use the big problem, small problem thing against you. Like whenever I dislodge my son or raise my voice, he's like, Dad, this is a small problem and that's a big reaction. It's not.
I remember that.
That's a big problem. Turn lights on.
Thank you. Having a.
That's when you're in the red zone.
Think you're in the red zone. Let's use some strategy.
I'm always in the red zone. All right, moving right on. Ms. Owen, can you lead us in a very, very quick summary of that last bullet point and superintendent's report?
Still a very poor.
Yeah, sure.
Or Dr. Sullivan, whoever.
No, absolutely.
Whoever's quicker.
I'm quicker. I'm quicker. So as you know, when we, when we built the FY twenty-three budget, we allocated, we were going to use two hundred thousand from the sped stabilization fund to balance our budget. The cleanest way to do it, according to the town accountant, is the school committee needs to vote that we vote to utilize the sped stabilization fund in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars to buy ahead tuitions, which will offset two hundred thousand dollars for next year.
Thank you very much, Ms. Owen. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion made by Mr. Carr is our second.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. St. Arch. All in favor, aye. All opposed. Motion you've unanimously passes. Thank you very much, Ms. Owen.
Thank you.
We've already voted that, so it's already happened.
We did.
That was incorporated. They wanted it expressly articulated.
Specifically, yeah.
Okay? All right. Dr. Sullivan, does that conclude the superintendent's report?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for that robust report.
It was a lot.
Move on to the next agenda item, which is our special education update given by our Director of Student Services, Mrs. Barbara Simons.
Hi, everyone.
Hello.
Do I have to be able to share my screen?
I, I don't know, but you will in just a moment.
You went out and I bet you don't have. Okay. I can't, and I left.
You are now co-host.
Okay. You're in the red. You're back. Okay, so in the last school committee meeting at which I was present, it was the Student Services forum. And if everyone remembers, we were going through some of the things that what the Office of Student Services does and we talked about the multitude of things, including but not limited to special education that goes on within the Student Services Office. We also talked about the surveys, the three surveys, particularly that we had sent out this year through tiered focus monitoring, through our IEPs that we send out every single time, as well as through the, the formal independent evaluation that we had done in terms of our reading services and the feedback that we got from those. Interestingly, what we were hearing from Principals Sullivan and Farrell and what we heard in those surveys, there were a lot of common themes. There was a lot of, you know, commonality around communication, parent involvement and parent understanding of process. And those were the themes that we took as takeaways from our surveys as well. And those therefore are, you know, target areas for where we are going with what we are going to be doing next. But really where we're at right now in terms of this PowerPoint that I put forth for the Student Services is we were at the point at which we had looked at all of those things. And I really wanted to share with you what you can see on my website, because I think that's really important. I've really added a lot to the website. It gives a lot of information to people who are looking for things. This is not to say to parents, you know, look on our website first. Or, you know, if you want information, look at the website. You know that I have an open door and an open phone kind of policy. Parents will come to me up and they will say, you know what? I looked on your website. Here's some things I understand and here's some more things I'm confused about. I always welcome those calls, as do the team chairs. I just want to make you aware of what is actually on our website. So as I click it and it takes us there, what I am going to say to you is that the website was a bit of a point of pride for me in terms of how much has been added to it and the amount of information that's there. Right now, I will be honest with you, it, it's causing me a little bit of agitation because I'm looking at everything I've put in there and saying to myself, oh, my goodness, I really need to clean this up this summer and kind of clarify it and explain it a little bit to people because there is so much there. But I will take you through it quickly and just show you what's in it and kind of say to you how I'm going to clarify it and clean it up a little bit for you as well. So it, it opens with an overview of Student Services and it just explains all of that to you. The next one, if you were to click on, just takes you to kind of my welcome letter every year. And that's always updated. Actually, I'm going to kind of go back to my welcome letter for a moment because what I want to show you is that it lists all of us in the Office of Student Services as well as the team chairs. And then it lists the staff by schools and explains who they are to you and their roles. And I think that's really kind of nice for people to be able to see. The next part of it is something that I have left in there. It's our department contacts and it's kind of alphabetical. It's, it's a page that I have left there. I, I personally like the Student Services welcome letter and the way people are listed there. But just in case people like this, I maintain that.
Is there any phone numbers or just emails?
There's just emails.
Yeah, we should think of. As well, right?
Um, we certainly could.
A lot of people don't want to email. They'd rather speak to somebody, especially when it has to do with their child.
I, I think that if you call the school and, you know, want to leave a message for the person, that's kind of a good way to do it. I'm not sure.
You can do that by name.
By name.
By name.
And you can leave it, you can leave a message or get them.
Right. I think, yeah, I think I heard a question about that around, is it blocked during the day?
That's what I'm wondering.
For primary, twelfth school districts, they block it because they don't want to interrupt the teacher.
Right.
Exactly. We don't want the phone ringing.
Right.
But I don't, yeah, that's, I don't know that that's.
I think it just goes to that voicemail.
Voicemails. And that's probably the system it has for this. So not blocked. I didn't say blocked. It goes right to.
Well, maybe we could put like department contacts and then just the phone number too, if you wanted to call. Because some people like, especially when it comes to, I prefer a phone call because I'm just, and they get lost in that.
And I'll be able to, once I'm after two emails, I'm picking up the phone.
Right, right, right. Good, okay.
Um, there's an explanation of our extended school year, what that means, a little bit about timelines and things like that, so that people have an understanding of that. Updates from the director, and this is a little bit of what I need to clean up because I've put, this is a new one this year and I've put so much in it.
It's good.
What's in here is there are a lot of PowerPoints that I really need to explain to people because there's gotten to be so many in terms of the people I have invited to CPAC and the presentations they've made. So for example, obviously Dr. Stone's came and presented on assessment and literacy curriculum.
It's awesome.
The school psychologist came and presented on special education assessment and eligibility. The elementary team chair came, the secondary team chair came. The updated castle wheel was something I put on there. My school committee presentation from last summer is on there. There's some things that we need to put on there, you know, in terms of like presentation of physical restraint. The MTSS is on there, which is being updated because we have a task force working on that. The parent's notice of procedural safeguards that they get is also up on our website. There's a bit about, say, the special education process and programming. There's some information on EL. My basic rights presentation that I make every year at CPAC is on there. The notification that Dr. Stone and I needed to make around the tiered focus monitoring review this past year is up there. But this I really need to clarify for people so that they don't have to click on it so that they know what it is that they're looking at. There's a parent information section where I really try to kind of give parents guidance explaining the different pieces and parts of special education.
That's great.
There is our newsletter on there that there are specific timelines and regulations around temporary student records, how long we keep them, how you can get them, when they expire, when they in fact get destroyed, letters go out to notify parents before then. We had a great year this year of seniors and parents of seniors taking their records. I think it was our highest year so far. So that was really nice. These are, um, updates from DESI specifically for parents that come out that I include. And then if you continue to look, there is our procedures manual that's going to, um, right now is being reviewed for updating. There's a notification of how student registration takes place. And, um, the online packets there. There is our child find public notice every year. Our notice of special education services and what that means. Not only for students who are attending the public schools, but those who attend private schools at private expense if their parents reside within the town. And then finally, our Student Services Handbooks, and again, some of these are being updated and therefore they will be updated on the website. But it was really important for me to kind of showcase that website for all of you, to tell you how, kind of how we've expanded it and how I'm going to continue to now make it a little bit clearer and clarify some of that. We've already gone through that. Some of the things that we, um, we wanted to kind of really highlight in terms of the special education part of the Office of Student Services is how you qualify for special education. And what's really important about that is that you have to meet these factors, not just one of them. You have to have a diagnosed disability per the DESI categories, which we'll look at in a minute. And in combination with that, you have to actually have an inability to be able to make effective progress for which you need specialized instruction. And that is really the hallmark of Special Education Services. These are all of the categories for which you could potentially, um, have a diagnosed disability and meet that qualifying factor for Special Education Services. Some things that we highlighted in some of the messaging that we gave in our various groups who presented at CPACs this year, which we thought were really kind of important things for families to understand, is that it does not require independent diagnosis or an independent evaluation to qualify for Special Education Services. That we do a really robust, um, evaluation process within our district itself. That a disability category alone does not equal a specific intervention, that we really look at every child. And within that disability category, where are they breaking down and what are their individual needs? And along the same lines of that, that specialized instruction is highly individualized and really meets every student differently. So we could have two students who might qualify, let's say, under the autism category, under the developmental delay category, under a specific learning disability category, but what they would be receiving would be so different and individualized because of what that means for them. You can have more than one disability area. You can have a primary disability area that really shows what is getting in the most way of your ability to make effective progress, but you can also have a secondary disability. You could meet a criteria for having a disability, but you can also be a student who is making effective progress nevertheless, and you might not require specialized instruction.
Ms. Swann, this, this is so important, and what I, what I worry about is given where we are on the evening, I'm, I'm wondering if we're not reaching the people that we need to hear. I guess I'd, I'd like the committee's view as to whether or not we should, if people are okay coming back at another meeting where it's not quite as, I, I don't know.
I think that our numbers look like they usually do, and we should probably have this shared in the Navigator newsletter, and I think that that's gonna, I don't, I don't. Yeah, it says kind of there, our average is like ten.
Well, that's, that's ten, that's ten participants. It's not even ten Ds. The numbers are lower tonight. I was also reaching out to a few people that usually watch on Facebook to see if they are and they're not. So I just feel like, yeah, there's not a lot of attendance tonight. I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, it's only so much we can do about it. I, I, I mean.
I will be honest with you, this is going to go onto the, onto my webpage as everything else does.
You can go to my newsletter.
And it will go out in the newsletter be, once we have finished this. And then, um, you know, if there's, if there's, um, an, an interest that comes to either the school committee's attention or to our attention, that people would like this fleshed out a little bit more in one of my school committee updates, I'm happy to look at any piece or part of it and talk about it more.
First up data, the, the data review, which we could do as well, if you want to look at that, or we know that, whatever, whatever the committee will.
Some of it was touched on in the forum, too.
Well, the data we go over, this is a once a month thing, right?
I'm finishing the forum and then I'm.
Yeah, I think that data is something that we all want to know anyway. It's usually one person.
And I'll, I'll apologize also to Mrs. Swann because it was a very beefy agenda.
Yeah, yeah. But we, we've also committed to having her once a month. So, yeah, so this is kind of what we're.
Just a general topic here with people paying attention to school at the end of the year.
We just had that workshop.
There's spring sports.
I, yeah, I think, I think to Lance's point.
Seniors are graduated.
Yes.
And this is really good stuff and really, uh, important to.
What was, what was, what was striking to me, and the reason I, I wanted to raise that, and, and again, we can go wherever we want, but thi- this is what I think a lot of people have concerns about. This right here, that the assessment, what means, you know, what happens when I meet, what happens if I don't meet, what are the criteria? This, this is where, where I think people have concerns, and so I was thinking, geez, how many of you are going to be logged in at nine o'clock at night watching the school committee? This is something that maybe we, maybe we defer to, you know, just have a, what on your next month, maybe not next month, but at some other time having upfront and just make sure this is a reminder as opposed to going through it now. Maybe we just shift gears to, you're, you're, you're the chair, shift gears to the.
I mean, some of it was addressed in the, the forum too. I mean, that was sort of the purpose of it. There was some of that brochure sort of information presented. Yeah, I mean, I think we, I think we just, I think we just continue with the update and then, you know, this isn't the last time.
No.
Right.
Ms. Swann, you know, we'll present this again, and we can, we can message this before the school year when people are paying more attention to school, you know, we can sort of message this in different ways.
So our takeaways really, um, if we looked at all of the parent feedback and we looked at all of the surveys and and again, you know, listening to Principal Farrell, Principal Sullivan, and some of their survey feedbacks, they really line up. Strengths, um, communication is one of them. It's not to say it couldn't be improved, but, you know, like Mr. Dial said, eighty-seven percent is nothing to sneeze at. It is a bit of a strength there. It always can use improvement. Our evaluations, our transitions, um, as, as, and, and our welcoming of, of families and of students and so on, so far, where we're all seen as a strength, where we want to go. And again, to Mr. Dial, the understanding of that process to make that clearer. Parental access and progress monitoring. What does that data mean? What does this mean for us for opportunities? Certainly, Assistant Superintendent, um, Scollins and I have been talking about a data committee and really, um, taking a look at that, what does it mean, how are we aligning, what are we using, and how are we communicating? And a possible realignment of some of our resources based on some of the results of these independent evaluations, what we are seeing and what we are hearing from families around, what is important and what is needed. And our target areas, really clear communication about process, both through MTSS and through IEP and data sharing. And those are going to be some, you know, real focus areas for us as far as targets go. And therefore also our focus, um, our areas of focus and development. And everything that is here I have already said, but also that vertical alignment of practice.
We have one comment from the public. So, uh, Melissa McDonough, um, Donna from three oh six Fair Oaks Lane. Is there any progress on the items raised at the forum last month or a plan to track them?
So certainly, though, the last forum was on, um, May eighteenth. It, um, it hasn't been that very long since then. I took notes on what all of those things are and kind of looked at where are we going, how is it fitting into our current plan? And how do we need to, um, look at some of the things which, you know, perhaps maybe new things? And there were also, you know, ways that these could be communicated that were, were shared with us that we'll look at very seriously. But as far as progress between May eighteenth and tonight, not so much.
Can I ask a follow-up on that?
Yes.
There were some things that were concerning that were brought up, like letters weren't being sent home at certain levels. I know that Ms. McDonough brought up like parents could be involved in, in more ways. I feel like there are action steps that can be acted upon very quickly, and then there are others that are like understandably more long-term processes. I just think it's really important that those, like, like parent involvement and letters being sent out, which are kind of overlapping Venn diagram ideas. Those didn't happen.
Yeah, one of those was, you know, when people were, children moving to, uh, MTSS, I think. There was a debate as to whether letters were going out or not.
Yeah.
What was the meaning? So that you get information.
Well, just like knowledge that your child's on a, a different path than what it was. And there was some disagreement as to whether or not that was that parents may communicate.
Right. There was some inconsistency. So those are the things that we're making sure that everybody's feeling.
Okay.
I thought also too, there was something where, when you, you could go to the meetings that you get some information that we could give. I know there's some.
Related to special education.
Because I, you know, I, I see that sometimes even with our school committees. Sometimes you get going to these meetings and I'm not prepared in a, you know, I, 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 that's what I got out of it.
Yeah.
I got that parents felt like they weren't prepared when they went into the meeting because they weren't giving out any information going in. So that's some of an action step that I saw that was one of the most important things. So I don't know if we're working on that.
So maybe our next, our next special education update, we can get an update against those observations and action.
Yeah, we, we, we identified the areas where we were consistent and were addressing, but in, honestly, it's been two weeks, so.
Yeah, yeah. But we're listening. The point is we're listening.
Exactly. We are, we are not only listening, we are truly hearing them.
Right. And, and honestly too, seeing this update, this is something that, that, that get that information out there.
Yes.
Power is information, and now that we're, we're seeing the, the, uh, the works of it. Thank you.
If I could quickly just share my update, I will do that and show that to you. So this is, this is what I typically do when I come here every month. What I wanted to show you was that, um, we said, we said that we would look in September, in the middle of the year, at the end of the year, at the active IEPs in each school. What we can see is that, um, we've had a bit of a bump at the Osgead. You can see that that percentage number went up. And, um, what we really kind of drilled down and looked at was we looked at our pre-K and K population, and really, a lot of those students qualify under communication, if you think back to COVID. And you think about the lack of communication that they had because a lot of kids were not attending preschool. They were in their homes. They didn't have social groups. They didn't have those skills. We also saw, which is something that actually we're kind of looking forward to happen a little bit, a bit of a bump of qualifying in grade two in areas of a specific learning disability and reading. And we were looking for that to happen instead of waiting for that identification to happen at the Deer Hill. And we're starting to see a little bit of that. So that is, um, some of what the data tells us about that bump at the Osgead. If you look at the Deer Hill, the middle school and the high school, they all remained, um, pretty much the same, a little bit of a dip there at, um, the middle school, but pretty much the same. We updated the current disability category percentages as well, um, to reflect where we are at, and the change was not even, you know, mentionable, to be honest with you. We're staying well within those kind of percentages for each of those disability categories, which pretty much do kind of line up with the way we see them play out, um, across the Commonwealth. That, um, specific learning disabilities always tend to be the highest percentage point for disability areas. Besides that, if I could scroll down here to just show you what we've been doing in May. You can see we had, um, I think, a record number of meetings.
Is that fifty-one?
It is.
Wow.
I know it.
Wow, it's usually thirty.
Yes.
Right?
Exactly.
It's, that's actually.
He's always busy.
It is. It's a very busy month.
Okay.
But if you look, if you look at the, um, initial evaluations, you can see that, um, one of them came from early intervention. Seven of them came from MTSS, which was a nice showing in terms of the elementary. Four from the elementary came from parents. For the middle, high school level, two of them came through MTSS and two of them came through parents. So we're really seeing the processes work. You can see the rest of the reevaluations and the reviews and the number of meetings, as I said, that we did this month. I think it was, um, a record number. Our parent surveys this month showed that, um, eighty-four percent of the IEP surveys, parents were in the strongly agreed or agreed categories. They were very positive. Sixteen percent of them were mixed, which means that most of the areas, eighty-seven percent, to be honest with you, within that sixteen of that were strongly agree or agree. But there were some areas, um, that showed some areas of need. Again, they were need and understanding process and communication. There were zero percent of the parent surveys that showed that there was disagreed or strongly disagreed in, in categories. And just if we were to look at this at a little bit of an, um, an end of the year kind of review. This year, some of the things that we did, we started off the year September one doing dyslexia training for the elementary staff. We continued with our clinical consultants, Doctors Barry Plummer and Steve Bonato. Not only did some of our district, you know, within district people present at CPAC, but so did those clinical consultants, um, in a very nice way, as well as consult to us all during the year on some issues and cases and things like that. We also had, um, Beth Ross and Steve Lilly Weber, who are the mediators for our area, do a presentation at CPAC on mediation and facilitated meetings and what that means. We attended some ACE conferences and, um, some social emotional wellness symposiums. If you remember, last year we added in a, um, special education teacher to bring an additional co-talk class to the eighth grade because there was a bubble group there. I believe I spoke of this before, but that teacher is moving up to the high school with that bubble class. But what that is going to enable us to do is to really target that teacher for students for whom we are identifying their area of disability in more of the emotional and mental health category and provide services to them through that lens specifically, which is kind of fleshing out a little bit of a therapeutic programming for us, which is very needed and very nice. We added, as, as I said before, a school social worker and Uptar involvement with Rite. Our MTSS task force is nothing up for this year, but continuing next year in terms of tiered supports. And we'll be making some changes to our website based on some of the work that they have done. And, you know, we are looking for continued, um, program evaluations and trainings in, um, our focus areas as we move forward into next year.
Thank you so much, Ms. Swann. Are there any questions for Ms. Swann? Being mindful of the fact that our administrators are going on about a fourteen-hour workday right now, and Ms. Swann does not have a short commute either, so, um, you know, she's here regularly.
No questions.
But, uh, let's just, you know, no, I mean, ask questions if you need to. I'm just, I'm just reminding everyone where we are. And, you know, I mean, you know, she's not going to disappear. She's still going to be at work, you know, tomorrow and Friday, so we can reach out to her anytime. So, Ms. Carr, you have any questions to Mr. Swann?
Thank you very much.
Mr. Dial?
I just have a thirty-seven minute statement.
Mr. Carey?
No, just to thank you.
Mrs. St. Ange?
As we, uh, maybe in our next, the next meeting when we see you, because it will be summer, even though there are no summer meetings on the calendar at this point, assuming we will meet during summer, um, could we include, um, E S Y data in the report? Just because there are students who continue special ed during the summer, right?
Yeah, right.
So I'd just be curious to follow along with that.
Sure.
And hear about how that's, how that's done, how that's reported.
Yep.
How, you know, how it's tracked.
Great suggestion.
What's that?
Extended school year. Yeah, I mean, there's, yeah, I think, I just think like, there's so much learning that is scheduled for this summer. I'd love to hear about it. And then I think, yeah, Ms. Swann, just from like that educational slide that you included, doing something like that about extended school year would be super helpful so that all families can understand it as well as the committee.
Absolutely.
And then just give us some data.
Principal Farrell's running that, I think.
Well, extended school is different.
Yes, the summer learning program, which will be programmed, yeah.
So that's going to be good to update on as well.
Yeah, but yeah, if we can do it all.
Would just be awesome to hear. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Okay.
We have one more. Question, casting your forty Red Gate Lane. At the SPED forum, the mention was the survey results would be shared tonight. Will those be shared in more detail to review themes? I'm sorry. At the SPED forum, the mention was the survey results would be shared tonight. Will those be shared in more detail to review themes?
Then you should, you should.
Last time.
Last time, at the forum.
Yes.
But that would be.
I think there was, it was, I'm trying to remember now about the, um, you had a question about the results and, um, maybe she can follow up and just specify. I can't remember exactly what it was. It was, it was the way it was being reported, like what, what, um, I know she, she.
I have my minutes. Let me see.
Yeah, I don't know. It's going to be in there.
I don't know. Sometimes I'm pretty detailed.
Well, she's listening. She can, she, she knows what I'm talking about.
Oh, the specific results about the Cherry Ham survey.
Oh. So, yeah, we, we, we are. Oh, so, yeah, we, we are still, the final report from Terry Ham. Yes, and that is coming. And that, once we get that final report, we will be sharing that.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
And that doesn't count as a second comment.
Okay, anything else, Dr. Skonos, from the community?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Swann.
Travel, travel safely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving on, school committee section. Let's just, let's just do the schedule last here. It's no, no update from the school facilities committee. Any updates from any subcommittees? Anyone?
We have a facilities committee. We just...
Yeah, we talked about the bus there and then the track, so we're good.
We're good.
Okay. Let's, okay, so now that we banged that out, let's do the, the school committee's schedule. It looks like many of these have already been slated. Except for July and August. So we already have June twenty-second scheduled for Mr. Dial's first meeting as chair. And then following that, it looks like July thirteenth might be the next logical meeting. Does everyone agree with that? Then July twenty-seventh?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
In reverse alphabetical order. Are we required to meet twice a month in the summer?
Because I was just going to raise that, maybe we can do once in August.
Do like a...
Well, go ahead.
It's your call.
There's an issue with that. We'll go ahead and finish the question first.
I know there are topics that we typically discuss in the summer. So I don't want to make us have very long meetings on the nights that we do have meetings. And I guess I was going to say, could we do one in July? But just because I love summer and don't want to have meetings, that's all.
Well, school's not in session, right? And so, so school's not in session and we traditionally don't meet during vacation, school vacation weeks. So this is school vacation, so it would make sense to throttle back. The problem is, there's a lot of planning that's done over the summer from an administrative and leadership perspective. So I worry, I, I would love to, to get rid of one of the meetings in the summertime. I don't know if the better time to do that is July or August because August, kind of like, we're really starting to ramp up. I don't know, though, because this year, last year or previous years when I was chair was different because we were dealing with issues that aren't going to exist this August. So I don't know how crowded August is going to be.
Yeah, like, we don't have school start time. We don't have...
Right.
Can we, can we propose this?
Yeah.
Why don't we do the thirteenth from July?
Yep.
And then the twenty-fourth in August.
Okay.
And then we will, on the thirteenth of July, one of our agenda items will be assess whether we need a meeting on the tenth of August. And that will be based on input from administration as to what you need from us as a school committee.
Doctor Sullivan, what do you think about that?
I'm okay. Could you say the August date again?
So August twenty-fourth.
Yeah, I mean, that's late and, that's late in August. I mean, obviously, yeah, it's, we kind of ramp it up. We have our retreat on the eighteenth of August.
Wait, I mean, I just picked that randomly.
What about, what about the tenth of August?
Or the seventeenth, if we want to do one meet. That, what I was, what I was trying to do is do
One meeting.
Secure one meeting in July and August with the option of another meeting in August.
We can always have meetings. We can always call a special meeting. We can always do a meeting.
Well, it's just because I want to make sure we have a whole date in case.
To regular schedule meetings, I'm saying, but like, we need more. We don't even necessarily need it is that, you know, we can always hold a special meeting. So this is all going to be up to you.
Well, not today. Today would resolve it.
Dr. Skonos, from Peter, July thirteenth.
July thirteenth is a Saturday. I mean, sorry, no, sorry. I think really...
No, July thirteenth.
July.
The only, only other suggestion I have was, I mean, it, I'm fine. I can do the thirteenth and I can do the, the tenth of August. Those weren't for me. The only, the only thought I had is, I don't know if we wanted to take a little break. I mean, the school goes to the thirtieth. We have our, well, we don't, we have our last school committee on the twenty-second.
Yeah, there'll be a break.
Yeah, that's fine.
So one of seven on the thirteenth and the tenth for now?
Yeah, because then the twenty-fourth is like right before we get...
What about the seventh, tenth of the seventeenth, so ten? Ten?
So maybe three weeks.
I think the tenth is great, actually.
But then we're, then we're four weeks away from a meeting on the seventh.
I'm just going to tell you right now, August fifteenth to nineteenth is the end of, like, every summer camp. And there's, like, events and awards and this is and that. So like, that's just really hard to get to.
Okay, fair enough.
I have a thirteen, eight, ten?
Yes.
Okay, and then, I mean, do we see any problems with the, with the proposed school committee meetings from September through June?
Yeah, I think those seem fine. There was one month that stood out. What was it? April has back-to-back fifth and twelfth. Are we okay with that?
Oh.
I mean...
That's...
Yeah, that's because of April vacation.
I know, but...
No, I know it's because of, I'm saying, are we okay?
No, we're not okay with that. No, good, thank you.
Do we want to do March twenty-ninth and then April twelfth?
Yeah.
So it will be three in March, but it will keep it every other.
Sometimes we do, we typically have, a lot of times we have...
March is just very long, but I think I would prefer three in March to back-to-back in April.
All right.
As with my...
No, we're not doing that. This makes sense to back. So what did you say, Mr. Dial?
No, I was just, I was going down, it was like when you're doing a maze and you go to the dead end. That didn't work.
Yeah, if you do the twenty-sixth, then you end up back-to-back again and then we trickle. So...
So I like the twenty-ninth, twenty-ninth is...
And then we're deleting what?
And the twelfth.
Yeah, no fifth, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, can the fifth?
Yeah.
And then...
Right, March twenty-nine instead of April five.
Yep.
And then April twelve. Because then it's every...
And then are we going to wait till May third again?
Yeah.
Okay, then keep it the same?
May seventeen.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll send those to Jennifer, so that she has them all.
Aye.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve that calendar we just started to...
Yeah.
Oh, you're already practicing?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Wait, who?
All moved. I second it. In the real one.
Let's hold the chairman on it.
Okay, so Mr. Kearney moved, Mr. Dial seconded, all in favor? Aye, all opposed. Motion unanimously passes. That's the calendar will adopt. Ms. St. Orange, you can get those dates to Mrs. Aridis?
I will.
Okay, great. Moving on, in the school committee section, we approve all minutes. We have three sets of our minutes to approve. We have the April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting, and May eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two student services forum. Mr. Carr, you will not be able to vote on any of these as you are not present for meetings because you weren't a member yet, obviously. And just make sure you are here if you're going to, if you were at the meeting, if you're going to vote. I, I think that everyone else can vote. We need to make sure that the dates are fixed because it reflects the wrong year on two of them.
Oh, gosh, sorry.
And that's fine. So let's just go through them one by one, April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-two. All parties that are here can vote on that, with the exception of Mr. Carr. Did anyone see anything that they wanted to modify? Okay, is there a motion to approve that, that set of minutes?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Mr. Dial. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. St. Orange. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstention, Mr. Carr. Motion passes by a vote, by a vote of four members, one abstention. Those meeting minutes are approved. Next meeting minutes are May eleventh, two thousand twenty-two. All members that are present here, with the exception of Mr. Carr, can vote in these minutes. Did anyone see anything? I did. I saw some. So if you look at page two, recognition of vice chairperson, Asha Kaleri, and then also in the superintendent's report, the first sentence, they keep on using this word audacious. I don't, like, remember anyone being described as audacious.
Oh, I do. Dr. Sullivan used it multiple times.
Did he?
Yeah.
All right.
Being audacious.
So audacious of you to use that word.
Yeah.
Okay.
Really punctuated it.
Yeah.
All right, great.
I wouldn't have had with that.
That's the answer. Okay, great. That's, that was my only issue. Anybody have any other objections or concerns or comments about these minutes? May eleventh, that's twenty-two. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented by our secretary, Mrs. St. Orange?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Dial, seconded by Mr. Kearney. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstention, Mr. Carr. Motion passes by a vote of four members, one abstention. Minutes are approved. Next set of minutes for consideration, May eighteen, two thousand twenty-two. That date needs to be...
Yeah, I'll get it. Sorry.
Anybody see anything with these minutes that they had concerns about? Any desired revisions or modifications? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the May eighteen, two thousand twenty-two minutes of the student, the student services forum, non-school committee meeting? All members that are present here tonight can vote on these. Is there a motion to approve as presented by the secretary, Mrs. St. Orange?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Dial, seconded.
Second.
By Mrs. St. Orange. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstention, Mr. Carr. Motion passes by a vote of four members, one abstention. Meeting minutes are approved. Mrs. St. Orange, that constitutes all the minutes for approval tonight, correct?
Yeah, yeah, and we'll get the year on those and send them to be published.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, and just for the record, we, we are aware that we're, we're behind a minute and Mrs. St. Orange and I have collaborated, started to collaborate on, on addressing that within the next month, so we can keep an update. And Mr. Dial's on, you know, in, in, been informed of that. So we know it's something that we need to deal with. One of the major issues, and he's going to put it out there, is that during the pandemic months, we had a lapse of recorder, like reporter, there's someone that, like Ms. Bach, helps us with this. And there was a, there was a lapse of that resource. And that, that has, that has given us some difficulty.